I mean, we're gonna break in, we're gonna break in.
He's just gonna lie about it.
Yeah.
I think I was pretty honest with John and Mark, I like it, a lot of, what, some days it's two hundred pages, other than be like sixteen. Once you, once you, once you understand what you really need to focus on and what you don't.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of it's stuff we've seen before.
You've already heard and already know, we've already discussed, we skipped twenty pages, but luckily you're only in a two-year term now.
So what do we, so we're gonna...
These are pretty, these are pretty, this really tells you a whole lot.
It's real. Say the pledge.
And then we're gonna go down there.
Experiment, take a recess, go down there.
Exactly where they're at.
We're done with that, we'll come back to the dice and do a special session.
Okay.
When Spencer's talking, we're open meeting.
All that info from the TSP, it's like, come on, we really need to know.
I'm getting all...
Oh, I'm not, I know, I always...
I may as well wait, shoot it out.
Yeah, I know, I have my son, that's me.
I'm not sure why you added all the...
I haven't even, she sent a mail today, I haven't even checked it. I've been so busy.
Hello, and thank you all for coming to the February twenty-fourth work session. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna do things a little bit crooked, maybe get it done right. We're gonna start here, and we're gonna get Alan Dukes sworn in as the new city councillor, and then we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll move down to our tables as normal, but for now, Judge, would you please?
Readings, everybody. Mayor Smith, city councillors, citizens of Crestwell, friends, family and well wishers, members of the press and interested observers. Energy and optimism here at the local level permeates our public business and the temperament of our public business, thanks to all the folks who serve the city and its citizens. The ceremony that I am about to perform begins the public service of the newest member of the city council. I'd ask Alan Dukes to come forward with his family for the swearing-in. Okay. Okay, Mr. Dukes, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Alan Dukes.
Swear or affirm under penalty of perjury...
Swear, family, or perjury.
Swear or affirm under penalty of perjury...
Swear and affirm under penalty of perjury.
That I promise...
That I promise.
That I will perform my duties...
I will perform my duties.
In good faith...
In good faith.
Openly...
Openly.
Honestly...
Honestly.
And civilly...
And civilly.
I promise...
I promise.
That to the best of my ability...
At the best of my ability.
That I will always seek to do...
I will always seek to do.
What is in the best interest of the community.
What is in the best interest of the community.
And not just that...
And not just that.
Which will benefit me personally.
Which will benefit me personally.
I also promise...
I also promise.
That I will support and defend...
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Home Rule Charter of the City of Crestwell.
The Home Rule Charter of the City of Crestwell.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilor.
Thank you.
Now, since this can be the last time that you ever do this, stand up and give him an applause. You want some photos?
I didn't know I was getting, going to be related to the city councilman.
If you keep showing up, I might make you another one.
Yes, you're gonna be one too.
He's in training.
Great age to start it. Alright, thank you.
Very good. We'll see you. Thank you very much, Council. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Alright, we'll recess for five, we'll sit at the tables, and we'll head down.
I have that. I have them all behind me, so that they're right there. I got business.
What's John's voice?
I got you, John. Still not.
I was gonna say that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I just spoiled your stuff during the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to make sure I grabbed my stuff, so.
I'll put seat charts.
Can you stand up a bit?
Walk yourself.
Uh, sure. Eventually my teeth will get... Thank you. It's just one central, that would be. We have a new case.
Ready? Very good? Let's get back to work. Alright, so we did the House Office, that was our first priority. Second, is gonna be the mayor's report, and quickly, councillor Clark Kent is ill tonight, so we wish him best luck and health, and get back to it. So he's, that's an excused absence. We also have items four B and four C are gonna be stricken from the agenda tonight. The planning commission needs a little bit more time, alright, to finalize some details, so we'll remove those and put those on the next work session, I believe, and then should be good to go. But, these are committee reports, and the first one is administrative and finance. Alonso?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, the administration and finance meeting, we met February third to review the city employee evaluation schedule for 2025, as per the charge given to the committee by Mayor Nick Smith. And the procedure is gonna be very similar to last year, so just be, you know, familiarize your, to the, you'll familiarize yourself with it as we go to the new councillors. So, I believe, we've already have everybody signed up for the municipal judge, court's signed up, so that, that process is, we've already accomplished getting everyone signed up, and then, so then you'll just attend court at that selected date and fill out the evaluation sheet that will be available at court, and you'll just see the court clerk for that, that form, and just leave the completed evaluation sheet at court, if you can, or if not, if you wanna take it home and fill it out further or whatever, just turn it in no later than October third to City Hall, okay? And on September tenth is the last day to attend municipal court. And, or as you said, October third is when the evaluations are due, and then on October thirteenth is executive session, where we will evaluate the municipal judge, okay? So those are, so, you know, I'm gonna throw a lot of dates at you right now, but they'll come in our packets, and so, okay, so that's how we'll do the judge. Then we will do the city attorney, on the September twenty-second, we'll receive the city attorney evaluation, hard copy form in our, in our packet, or, and we'll, hopefully we receive the electronic version via email, I know sometimes, there were some issues with that not working so well in the past, I don't know if anyone can take a look at that, whatever. So if not, we'll be, and we'll do the same, you'll get a hard copy, fill it out, and those are also due October third, same time as the judge, to get those forms back in, okay? And then also October thirteenth, we will be evaluating the city attorney and the municipal judge that same night in executive session, okay? So that's how that process will work for a city attorney. And the last but not least is the city manager. So, let's see what I have here, we will receive those materials October thirteenth as well, that same day, we'll receive all her materials, or, I'm sorry, the city manager's materials.
Whatever they might be.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was just saying, saying for Michelle. Okay, so then October thirty-first, Halloween, will be the deadline to hand in the city manager evaluation form, okay? So, hopefully, if the electronic form doesn't work out, it's really easy, just email it back by Halloween, October thirty-first, if not, then we have to physically bring it in. And November tenth is the executive session to evaluate the city manager, okay? Any questions? If not, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public safety, Clark is not here, obviously, but what he did want to mention, I'll take charge in. March fourth, six P.M. is the next public safety meeting. Other than that, that's all I have for public safety, but they'll hopefully cover Clark, and I did it, did him justice. And next would be transportation and public works, councillor Holt.
Thank you, Mayor. We, Transportation and Public Works Committee met on February twelfth, and we were able to complete our, our work with, from your charge in that first meeting, and so that will be our only meeting unless we have to go back to the table and discuss the TUF more. So, what resulted out of that meeting, our recommendation for the water rate, the sewer rate and the TUF, and I'll, I'll talk to each one separately. On the transportation utility fee, we recommend a zero percent rate increase at this time, based on the information that we have. There's no reason to increase the TUF in our current environment. We recognize that we could go back to the table and discuss that again if, if, if we decide that our Second Street project requires that, so. And then on, I, I think I'll go with the bad news first, the sewer rate fee, we knew this was coming, we knew that, that our expenses were gonna be astronomical for the DEQ requirements, and unfortunately, we're having to recommend a fifteen percent rate increase for sewer for this year, I know. But, I have some great news about water. We are recommending a five percent decrease in water rates this year. The reduction is due to a one point three million dollar decrease in rate-funded improvements because of grant awards, and because of a two hundred twenty-six thousand dollar decrease in our annual debt service.
Okay, wow.
So our water funds are doing well, and Jim was confident that we could take this decrease and still be doing well next year.
Awesome.
So, so the overall, that, the overall, if we, we, we were to look at an average bill and assume that our public safety bill is gonna go up three percent this year, we're looking at, on an average bill of about an eight dollar increase overall with all those considerations.
Per month.
Per month, yeah. Per month, per household. And of course, these recommendations will come to the budget committee next, so, which we will have plenty of time to talk about more, if you have questions, if you have questions now, I can try to answer.
Anybody got any questions on any of that?
You did say decrease.
I did.
It's on the filter.
I did.
Wow.
Uh, it's a first.
Right.
Yes, and, and I think that, that it shows our, our want and willingness to do the right thing, and that is the right thing to do.
Do we know who wrote the grant that got us the money?
Curtis, he's right behind me.
Thank you.
Curtis, I'd like to say thank you, sir, and the Crestwell would like to say thank you, that's a lot of money, so let's acknowledge the work that you did, I appreciate you, and I'm sure a lot more do as well, but I'd like to acknowledge that Curtis did the work on the grant and got us some money. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Is that it? Stacy?
Do you want more?
No, if it's good.
It is it, that is it. Unless, unless people have questions or detailed questions, but again, I think we're probably gonna have an opportunity to discuss this more when we're in budget committee as well.
Well, I can speak to some of the sewer and water, just a little bit, that I had continued discussions with our representatives. One, we plan, I plan to meet another one, I know Spencer's gonna have Cedric Hayden come down, but I've had multiple contacts with councillor, Representative Harburg, multiple times, and I haven't stopped asking for the thirty-one million dollar check, so, I'm, I'm still working on that, we'll see if we can bring the sewer down and hopefully continue to benefit Crestwell, but I haven't stopped asking for help, so, but I've also given them the plan that Crestwell has, that kinda stand on their own two feet too, so, hopefully that'll, that'll happen, and we'll, we'll have more good news in the future, so, thank you. Parks and Tree Advisory Board, Spencer, can you take that one?
They had a meeting on February eleventh, and, and the big thing that they're planning right now is the Arbor Day festivities, which will be on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, from ten till one P.M., and that'll be held in the, in the Lakes Park, I can't remember the...
Garden Lake Park.
Garden Lake Park, yeah, thank you. And, and so there's, there's quite a bit of activity that'll be going on in that morning. The city has historically set up a table at that event, so when we get closer to that time period, we'll see if any council members wanna sit on the table, we just provided some city information out at that table, and, and so we'll talk about that as we get a little closer. They also are working on the bat houses for this year, they did the birdhouses last year, did some work on, on the bird sign at Garden Lake Park, which Public Works did, but they were having some moisture problems, and the sign was warping, and I think Cliff has figured out a better way to mount that. The other thing that they'll be doing is on Saturday, February twenty-second, they're planting some more plants in the pollinator garden as part of a committee effort, and so that's going on. They talked a little bit about the, their budget coming up for next year, and also the city received a five thousand dollar grant from Pacific Power Foundation for signage for the pollinator garden, and they're trying to get that sign done and up prior to the Arbor Day at the park, so that's kind of the happenings at the, of the Parks Committee.
Thank you. Airport Commission, back to you, councillor Castillo.
Uh, no report tonight, Mayor.
Oh my goodness. Alright, Lane Act will be the next one, and Curtis is gonna take that over, since councillor Kent is not here.
Alright. So, Lane Act met, met up February twelfth, and there was a legislative update, some, a presentation from ODOT of how the executive action on January twentieth might affect ODOT's funding, and so ODOT's still trying to figure out exactly how the new project criteria will affect projects. They're speculating that projects that don't have grant agreements are most susceptible for not having their funding being received, and so one of the projects that that includes is on Oregon Highway one twenty-six, so that includes a stretch out in front of Veneta. Just the general comments of challenge of maintaining roads, federal funding doesn't pay for maintenance, it pays for new projects most of the time. A lot of the E.V. charging station projects are a risk, just at a staff level, we've received a handful of inquiries about E.V. charging stations, so, it's, we'll see if that impacts it. There was an officer election, and then there was a riveting bylaws discussion. And also, I can't take full credit for the grant, Cliff helped, our city engineer helped a lot, and my predecessor helped a lot, and figured I would come clean just on the off chance that she's watching the livestream tonight.
Well, thank you to all of you, that's a big deal, it really is. Can I ask a question?
Please.
You were, you were saying that they were talking, they did a presentation on how the executive actions will impact, is it just the ODOT grants? Because this came up in our, our water rate advisory, I asked the question in there, how, do we even know we're going to have grants down the road, you know? And so, so I was curious if, is, did they talk about, were they talking about just within the scope of ODOT?
Yeah, Spencer, maybe you can...
Yeah, I, I don't think anyone really knows right now. The one thing that we do know is there's a pause on a lot of, of the grants that, where there aren't contracts in place, and, and I don't think we're gonna know what the outcome that's gonna be for a little while yet, so, so it's, right now it's kind of a pause, you know, the, the new administration is sorting out a number of issues that impact grants that would be coming to states. Most of the money that City of Crestwell would get would likely be funds that are given to the state, then the state in turn provides that as a grant to the local units of government, because we're a small unit of government, so we typically would not get too many direct grants from the federal government for a road project as a community this size, so, the communities that do that are the, you know, fifty thousand community, fifty thousand population communities that, that, that will get a portion of the funds, and then the rest of them are, are divided up and divided among the communities for projects that qualify for those kinds of funds, so.
Shelley?
At this time, the FAA is instructing us to continue to work as though all the grants that we've got assigned to us will be appropriated in April, so they're still talking about going to go on that. And then the core grants are not an issue, they will be, the money will be available.
And I think the core grants are state grants, aren't they?
Yeah, they're state of Oregon, yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks, I was just trying to grasp an understanding, thank you.
Councillors, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Curtis. Don't go anywhere, you're next. What you're on. Alright, now we gotta move to our number four, to our discussion items, and the first one is transportation system plan amendment update for school crossings.
Miss the light? Okay. So, in front of you is a surgical amendment, so just a minor amendment to our TSP that looks at two projects. One is the addition of two crossings in front of the elementary school, and so in our Safe Rest to School Plan, there are identified priority crossings along Oregon Avenue and along A Street, and so along A Street, the crossings are tenth, ninth, eighth and seventh, because you could use all four of those streets to walk to school. And in our TSP, we only have priority projects on seventh and tenth, and we thought it was a good idea to include ninth and eighth as high priority projects. And that also came about in our, our Public Works and Safety Committee, is that what it's called? The Transportation Public Works Committee, and we sat around, it might have been, it was a long time ago now, six months ago, and I think we wanted to re-stripe one of the crossings, it might have been eighth, eighth and A Street, and we thought that we should put in our TSP as well. And the other part of the project is the northbound I-five intersection, this is an ODOT intersection, and I believe city council, city staff, we all received complaints of safety concerns, and in the TSP, the recommended improvement was an additional right turn lane leaving the intersection, and we didn't feel like this was an adequate way to, to address those safety concerns, especially as we have a couple of new restaurants in town, speculation of, of a grocery store, we have some assisted living facilities coming to town, so anticipated more traffic on that intersection. And so, we hired an engineer, Jenna, who's in the audience tonight with D.K.S., to do another traffic count, another traffic analysis of the intersection, and the recommended improvement after that is either a traffic signal or a roundabout facility, and there's also an interim improvement with, it's called a pork chop island, it's like a pedestrian medium that kinda separates the right turn line a little bit more clearly and gives pedestrians a safer crossing. So, I mean, the issue of this, I mean, the, the A Street crossings are helpful since it's part of the Safe Rest to School package, the I-five intersection, it is a bit of a, it's like, say we're trying to push a boulder down a football field, this kinda pushes it like the first six or seven yards, the, the project is expensive, and it's, it's in ODOT's roadways, and ODOT, of course, has roadways across the entire state, and because there hasn't, there's not a track record of safety concerns, or there's not a crash history at this intersection, it's still a low priority on ODOT's project list. That being said, it's important to include in our TSP in case grant funding does become available, and I'm making this up, but if there's a, like a highway bill that's specific towards Southland County, this, this kinda prepares us to submit for some kind of grant, because it shows that the city is in support of a traffic signal, or, or something at this intersection. And also, if, if, knock on wood, if there is a unfortunate accident at that intersection, this kinda primes the pump for a, a project going forward, so, again, to, yeah, any questions before I continue on? Stacy?
So, these are just, these would just be in as recommendations, because the last thing I wanna do is bring roundabouts to Crestwell, I'm telling you. And so, so this, this isn't gonna, we're not gonna, down the road, come along and say, well, it's in your TSP that you support roundabouts, you have to have one there. Nobody's gonna tell us that we have to do something because it's in here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I was reading through this, and I was just kinda looking at how much the city, they're expecting the city to pay, and just for traffic lights and with the amount of traffic that's using this, I use it a lot, myself, and four-way stops, well, it's a three-way stop there. I mean, if, if anything, that's not gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it would be a way to help with that intersection and with more traffic doing this, instead of going with lights and all that extra, extra money that's not necessarily needed.
You know, I'd love to have Jenna chime in on the project selection and...
Yep.
Sure?
Yeah.
What this might look like, you're the expert, and...
Yeah, I'll just say that the TSP amendment just says that, hey, we, you know, the city needs something more than what's there today, right? Whatever is there today isn't safe, it's not working in the long term, and so, whenever the time comes, ODOT will say, hey, you need to do an intersection evaluation, and that report and analysis will look at, and always stop, it'll look at a roundabout, it'll look at a traffic signal, it will look at all the options, that's just ODOT's process and requirements for that facility, is that they have to look at all the options, so, they'll, we'll do a comparison, we'll look at safety, we'll look at trucks, we'll look at what the community wants, that, all those things will be taken into consideration when the time comes to, to build those improvements, but, yes, there's, this amendment also includes some interim improvements, the pork chop island that Curtis mentioned, the additional of a right turn pocket coming off that ramp to go east on Cloverdale, those are all things that are on the end of like smaller, outside of mid, you know, medium cost, I know they're not cheap, but they're medium cost, and you would get a benefit out of them from, from a safety perspective, it would add some capacity to that ramp, it would keep those vehicles moving, you know, out of the, out of the off-ramp area, so, there's, there's, this amendment will help identify some things you can do in the interim, and then it also sets the stage for that long-term evaluation and kind of decision down the road, once, once that becomes an option.
Okay, I, I mean, with a little bit of experience with a truck, I've hauled triples, and so I've gone around roundabouts and through bend. But yes, there's, this amendment also includes some interim improvements, the pork chop island that Curtis mentioned, um, the additional of a right turn pocket coming off that ramp to go east on Cloverdale. Those are all things that are on the end of like smaller, outside of mid, you know, medium cost. I know they're not cheap, but they're medium cost, and you would get a benefit out of them from a safety perspective. It would add some capacity to that ramp. It would keep those vehicles moving, you know, out of the, out of the off-ramp area. So, there's, there's, this amendment will help identify some things you can do in the interim. And then, it also sets the stage for that long-term evaluation and kind of decision down the road, once, once that becomes an option.
Okay. I, I mean, with a little bit of experience with a truck, I've hauled triples, and so, I've gone around roundabouts and through bend area, and getting a set of triples around that is just almost impossible without going across the curb. So, when I seen that on there, I just was totally against the, anything with a roundabout. And we do have a lot of truck traffic right there in that intersection, going over to the motel, and then feeding some of the communities around here. And also with the pork chop thing, you also put an island on there, and with that sharp right corner, uh, if the truck happens to get that on there right, they're gonna have a little bit more tendency to have it flip over right there. So, granted, an extra lane coming off going northbound, going east onto that, a little, little bit wider there, that'd be perfect, but putting any kind of bumps or anything else like, like that would hinder that. That's why I was suggesting a stop sign, because if you have an always stop sign, you can also have crosswalks put in there with very reasonable cost effectiveness. And it also control that as well. Okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Bill?
Um, Phil Kent, I, I guess I'm the only one in the room injured at that intersection, so I would like to at least add the comment that I personally view it as a very dangerous intersection, mainly because you're coming across the, the bridge there. You're pretty much invisible to the traffic trying to turn left. So, unless you're the size of a truck, what they do is they stop, they look, and then they go for it. And in going for it, they ran into me on my bicycle. I was clearly, I was wearing this, I don't know how you get much brighter or safer than that. I was wearing that, I was in the bike lane, and still, she looked, didn't see me, pulled right out in front of me. I hit the dirt, ended up going to hospital. Uh, so, the idea that there's no traffic, I'm sorry, I didn't die, you know, so that you'd have a data point.
I was gonna ask, did you record it, so that at least it's on?
I only recorded it to call the police. The police failed to cite her, for whatever reason. I talked to Sergeant Speldrich, he said, well, it was, it was his decision. She sat there and said, it's my fault. I just didn't see him. I cut right out in front of him. But it wasn't written up, it wasn't cited. The one aspect that's come out of it is Ed wrote a letter to ODOT, I guess, and they're now at least sweeping the gravel, because there used to be a lot of gravel in that section, too. Now, twice, was it every two weeks? I guess they're actually sweeping the road there. So, something has happened. Uh, but to hear that it hasn't risen to the level of fatality.
Well, yeah, if they're not going to record when things do happen, how, how do we go down? It's no wonder there's nothing recorded, you know?
Yeah, it's in the report here.
It is in the report.
Well, I'm glad you're okay. It, it sucks that somebody's gotta die or get maimed for ODOT to do anything about that.
I'm not willing to go that far.
I appreciate your sacrifice so far.
I guess my point is, I think there's a lot of stuff that doesn't actually make it to the stats.
Right.
Yeah. And that makes it a little bit more difficult to get a push on these projects.
Well, I'm here, and we're probably a couple of years down one anyway, before there's any money to do anything, so.
Yeah.
Do we keep stats at all, or do we send anything to ODOT? Do we keep any in-house stats on, like, since this is on your radar, is this something that, I don't want to add more to the city plate, but is this something that is important to the city, that we need to do something? Is this a scenario where we need to kind of maybe have our own portfolio of how many accidents or injuries may have occurred there that, that might assist? You know, since the sheriff's department's in the same house, communicate on, hey, anything happens in the intersection, can tell me, just so I can make a date and a note, and simple?
Yeah, it'd be something for that, we could check on to see if that got reported again.
Yeah, because I never heard, I never heard anything about it.
Even if a ticket wasn't issued, there could have been a report.
A report of an accident.
Right. And, and, and ODOT gets all these reports from all law enforcement agents across the str, the state, and that's how they tabulate these, these issues. But we can, we can follow up. Maybe you can talk to Sergeant Speldrich and, and see if that did end up getting formally reported as a, as an accident.
Well, if that's what's gotta happen for us to get change, then we need to document everything.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's the only reason I was kind of putting focus on that, is because if we don't, if we don't document everything, we're not going to have data to back anything up.
Yep. It'll just be people wanting and wishing versus.
And I knew about his accident.
I didn't.
From social media, of all places. Yeah, because he had posted it with a, hey, this is why, please watch for riders and stuff. It was a very good message, by the way.
Did have it here, one pedestrian, then one rear-end accident.
Mm-hmm.
That's reported. It, that was in here, in the report here, yes.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Yeah, maybe you could maybe speak a little bit about the, the crosswalks, the, exactly, what's a call-out bubble? And it looks like they're $25,000 each.
For the Safe Rest to School?
And if there's maybe, maybe any grant funding available, maybe that could be pursued?
Can we shop that?
Seems kind of high. I thought it was just gonna paint some lines.
Ridiculous, it's outrageous.
We could put some paper in so that we can get his bikes.
Those aren't an official cost quote, right? Those are plain-level costs. That's actually what just goes in. That was what the costs were for those other two crosswalks, 7th and 10th, that were already in the TSP. Um, that's not what you necessarily would be paying at the end of the day. It would just be, you know, for a contractor, find someone to do that work for the price that you want, but.
Yeah, I, I would expect that funding would come from a Safe Rest to School construction project. Um, maybe the city would have a 10% match, something like that. But, um, these are intended to be pretty vigorous improvements, since it's dealing with five-year-olds and eight-year-olds. And the string of improvements, we're actually looking at a more thorough construction design in these intersections, will be like a raised crosswalk, and then two intersections with, with bulbouts, so curve extensions. That might have been what you were asking.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's some concrete, basically.
All right, that's, like, over here off of A Street, I believe?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, that makes sense. Okay.
Thank you, Curtis.
Anyone else?
That's.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, that leaves 4B and 4C are removed, and we'll go to budget calendar. It'll be Jim.
That was fairly quick.
Can we, can I ask a, just a quick question on A, really quick, sorry?
Sure.
Uh, we'll vote on this the next meeting, correct?
On the, on the changes?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor City Counselors. Uh, the item we have for you is the budgets calendar. Um, we, we haven't brought it into this, this format before, before the work session. But I'm really glad that we can do this collectively, rather than through email. And, let me get to in the packet.
We're trying to do the same thing, you got time?
Yeah, but when you find the page, let me know.
It might be nice if we had the agenda on here.
While, while you're doing that, yeah, um, we, we used to be able to hit the three little bars, and it would go, like, you could just say, go to select.
I'm setting that up that way.
It does for the council packet. I've always been told for the work session packet, it's just materials. So, the actual, like.
It would be helpful for us to.
It'd be helpful if you had the work session you showed.
If I just tie it to the memo.
Even if it just went to 4A and 4B.
Yeah, I mean, that's, just tie it to the agenda. Yeah, yeah, that'd be really great.
So, it's, it's about here in your paper packet.
Thanks.
You know, um,
Hang on.
I could just read the memo.
What I do on?
He doesn't know.
It doesn't have a pagination. It's just, it's right after the, um, development code update for cottage clusters.
Okay, it's page, it's PDF page 88.
I want three pages off.
Are we all together again?
Yes.
Woo-hoo!
We're back.
All right.
Little redeteter, Jim.
All right. Um, so, I put down some important dates here in the memo, and these are just the dates we typically run these things. And I appreciate any feedback from, from the group here. On Tuesday night, March 25th, at 6:00 PM, at City Hall, we'll do a budget training. Uh, that's especially good for new counselors who haven't been through the budget process, but it's also good for counselors who, who have, just to refresh on how the process works. And also, we'll go over the order by statutes that, that spell out the budget process and the budget laws. And, uh, after that, on May 6th, the first Budget Committee meeting. Um, it's Tuesday, May 6th, City Hall, 6:00 PM. Um, and then, we have to wait two weeks because of publication requirements. We have to notice it and then give it another notice for the meeting a week later. So, May 20th is as soon as we can come back and do it again, 6:00 PM. Um, like I said, the budget training is an overview of budget law in Oregon, how the process works. It's actually kind of, is spelt out in the, in the legal code of the state of Oregon. Um, the Budget Committee received copies, the annual budget as proposed, a week prior. Um, that's something that Spencer and I worked out. We'd like to get it out early this year, and, uh,
It's a week prior to May 6th.
Yes, sorry. A week prior to May 6th.
I appreciate that.
And we'll open with the budget messages, always. Uh, read through the budget message, basically a letter to y'all describing what's changed over the prior year, um, pointing out any significant things that have come about since last year. Um, and then, I'll do my PowerPoint presentation on significant areas of change year-over-year by fund. So, I'll break it down by fund of the city. And then, the committee will be asked for questions and proposals. And during that two-week period between the meetings, really appreciate the feedback, questions from the, from the council and the Assistant Budget Committee members. And we'll put together a Q and A that we'll put up on the website, so everybody can read over the responses, not just respond to one counselor, but respond to everybody. Um, and we'll put together a, or during the second meeting, after, after we get together for the second meeting, we'll go over the Q and A briefly, but really, it'll be a time for y'all to deliberate the budget, um, ask further questions, and hopefully, you have a, an approved budget. And that approved budget will go to the City Council for adoption on Monday, June 9th. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it. Any questions from?
Counselors? Uh, May 6th will be a Tuesday, I believe, so it'll be, it'll be after a session. It shouldn't be a two-hour meeting, but about an hour, hour and a half possibly. And then, usually, that second one is a little bit quicker, because everybody's got their feedback, and then we'll go to votes, so it's usually a little bit quicker. Just giving you a breakdown of the schedule. But, anybody else have any?
I'll have to miss the training, I'll be out of town.
No problem, I'll get you the slideshow.
I'm sure she said that last year.
I, I, actually, I was just thinking I was gone last year for the training as well.
It'll just be a regular video.
I know, it's, I'll be in Nebraska if you want to come.
She's a busy, busy girl. I got baseball, so we'll, I gotta make it work. Awesome. Well, thanks, Jim. If anybody else has got anything, appreciate y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Number 4E, and City Manager Profile Discussion. Spencer, take over.
Sure. Um, again, we've been talking about this process, starting in January 13th, Council meeting, where council wanted to do this process internally. At the January 27th work session, we reviewed a kind of a general outline of the process, and council seemed comfortable with that process. We had some discussions on some aspects of things to be included in there, and the council's desire to reach out to the public and to stakeholders to get some input on qualities for the next city manager. Uh, that work has been completed during this time period, and there's a draft, um, profile that we'll be reviewing tonight. Uh, and if council is comfortable moving forward, then we have a special meeting at the end of this meeting to, to approve a resolution which will kick off the, the search process. Um, again, uh, the resolution is required by state law, uh, because there will be executive sessions that'll be done as part of the, the search process for the City Council, including reviewing candidates and, and, and actually, the council's interview with candidates will be done in an executive session, um, in accordance with ORS 19266028. Um, the, again, tonight, we'll review the draft resolution and hiring process and make any desired adjustments to that process. Uh, if the council is comfortable, then, then we can kick this, this effort off. Based on our earlier discussion, um, I've updated the report from January 27th work session with the information that's emboldened the report. Uh, just to, again, let you know that the stakeholder interviews were completed, ended up interviewing, uh, in, in some detail, eight stakeholders in the community, including the school superintendent, the library director, food pantry manager, fire district chief, business owner, Crestwell First, and the Chamber of Commerce, and, and then also our Santa Pac contractors. And those were the, kind of a cross-section of people that represented various different items. The notes that are compiled in the back of this report are, will indicate what collectively was said by those groups, those individuals in individual meetings. Uh, we also did online surveys, written surveys, and, and written surveys. And, and so, in that particular situation, the council also asked that we do a survey of the boards and commission members, and we did that as well. And the results of that were included in, in this, this packet as well. And then, the initial draft of the job profile, which we'll run through tonight, is, is Appendix A, and that, that is my kind of run-through of the qualifications required for consideration of this position. Again, I want to go through that with council, make any modifications council has to that, and so that we can move forward with that. And then, the last part is the process. Uh, that has to be outlined in this resolution that the council will be using for selecting a new manager. And that talks about the recruitment, the evaluation criteria, and, and the hiring process. I have had the city attorney review the, the, the documents I put together. He made some suggested modifications that have been incorporated in the documents, and, and this kind of outlines what the process would be, which follows the discussion we had at the earlier work session with the council. So, the general time schedule is outlined in, in my report, and that's, again, February 24th, we're reviewing. And if council adopts a resolution outlining the hiring process, we can kick this process off. On February 27th through March 28th, that would be the application period for folks to make applications for this position. March 31st to April 3rd is the initial screening of candidates by the interim city manager. Uh, preliminary Zoom interviews are set up with qualified candidates. Uh, there'll be an executive session on, uh, April 14th to review that with council, make sure that we've got the right candidates that the council wants to go forward with in, in the, the final pool. Um, and then, the, the next item is, again, on April 28th. Uh, I've got something that's a little screwed up here, but we'll cover it in the resolution. On April 28th, is the, the executive session, the interim city manager will present a report to council to discuss the applicants who'd be invited for full interviews. So, so you're gonna get all the applicants that apply for this position. You're gonna see the ones that are, that I determined that are qualified. You'll see the ones that I thought weren't qualified, so you can review them as well. And then, council will make a decision as far as who do you want to bring in for the full interview process. Um, the, after that decision is made by council, then background checks would be conducted on the finalists, and estimating that, that there'd probably be, be four finalists that, that would be brought in for full interviews by council. Uh, that number can be flexible, could be less, could be more, depending on what council wants to, to do. And then, the, the way that this is set up is during the interview week, there'd be receptions with the public and with the, with employees to meet the candidates. There'll be a process for folks to provide feedback from those to the council on the candidates. Uh, panels would be set up to interview the finalists, and the council would do the final interview. Uh, and then, on the, before a decision is made by council, there'd be reports from the other panels that council would hear, and then you'd make your final decision as far as who you want to go forward with, with the next city manager of Crestwell. So, that's kind of the process that's, that's laid out here in a, in a general sense, and And we'll go through kind of more of the specifics. But are there any questions on the proposed process?
I thought that the mayor appointed the city manager.
The mayor does appoint the city manager, subject to confirmation of the council.
So what's with the input from the other... I guess I'm confused why we have so many different input points.
Because he asked for it at the last work session. And I think...
Talking stakeholders, right?
Yes, stakeholders.
Stakeholders, yeah, but...
Are you talking about the panels?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question on that.
Yeah, so that seems a little bit much.
I don't think so. Because I think the mayor wants as much input to make the best decision he can for the city of Crestwell, I would think. And again, that decision as the mayor's, it's not any of these panels. But they're going to tell you... Typically, you'll have a panel of appointed positions. Could be the school superintendent, could be a few other folks on that panel to kind of give you feedback on what they felt as a person that works for an elected body. Because this is a very unique position. Not that you guys are hard to work with, but an elected body with seven different people, you really need to make sure that the person you hire is comfortable. And understanding that they have to treat everyone equally, that they have to go through these processes, and they have to come up with a majority of council members to support any policies going forward. And that's not something that's in a normal job situation. So I think getting some feedback from folks that actually work for appointed bodies is good information for the council to receive. And for the mayor to receive as you're making a decision on your next city manager. So that's basically what those... It's just providing some additional feedback to help make a good decision going forward, so.
Yes, I clearly understand that it is the mayor points or consensus of the council. I would appreciate feedback from other panels. But my question is, how are these panels selected?
Well, typically, the council will be forming these panels. Or I'll be making some recommendations for the, like the professional panel, the citizen panel. If you have citizen panel, council will determine who you want sitting on that panel. So, you know, that's again, council will be in the driver's seat as far as who ultimately is serving on these panels, so.
Okay. And then when is... I didn't see when that selection would take place.
That would likely be part of one of the executive sessions, you know, going forward.
Okay.
But I will definitely plug that into the calendar, so.
It'd be at one of the executive session meetings?
It'd be at one of the times of the executive... I think that it would have to be done in an open session, determining who's participating in the panels. That's something that I will confirm, so.
Okay.
But it would be on one of those meeting dates where there's an executive session. Anybody else? And I think the other thing too is I did receive a lot of positive feedback of the council's interest in getting as much input as you can in this process. So a number of the folks were very pleased to be asked to provide their opinions, so. And opinions are opinions. Ultimately, mayor and council's going to have to make that decision, so.
On the required minimum education and experience?
Before we go to that, just process-wise, is there a level of comfort in the process that's been outlined here with the addition of the comment that Alonso made to add, you know, selection of panels by the council?
I'd like to hear how the mayor feels about this panel selection.
I... I want everybody's input as best as we can, but ultimately I trust the stable. So I trust the department heads of the city, who they might like. And so I'm open to feedback, I guess, or if somebody wants to email or put something together. But I don't know that I necessarily want to take a bunch of time with other people in that process, honestly. I think it's up to us, it's up to city staff, like I said, the department heads, and that's kind of what I'm focused on. Happy to take feedback from citizens and people of Crestwell who want to say something. But I don't know how deep in the weeds I'm going to go into the process of meeting and getting feedback like that.
Yeah, and I think the only thing the council will get from these processes is a report from each of these committees about what their feedback they're providing you as far as how the people interviewed in there. But if council doesn't want to do that, you know, the community reception is in place. And I would recommend that you have a professional panel to evaluate, you know, their ability to work with a collective body. Because that's where most failures happen with city managers. You end up getting someone in that position that doesn't fully understand the dynamics of working for a body versus a boss. So it's a different creature.
Typically, cities don't really do a lot of this in-house. They typically farm this out to HR people. Or I don't even know. I can't think of what they're called.
Yeah, recruiters.
Recruiters, thank you. I couldn't come up with it. So I would guess that recruiters, when they handled these positions before, did not bother putting together panels. Am I correct?
No, there's always... Every interview I've ever been involved has involved panels. And you've had the feedback coming to the council from a variety of sources. But the ultimate decision is made by council. And it's just really providing one more glimpse at the candidates in a different perspective than what you may see during your interview. And you combine that with what you saw during your interview. And the mayor makes a selection and the committee makes... The council makes a decision whether you want to confirm that.
So even when we used an outside source to do this work, they put together community panels?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. The only thing that... Basically, what I'm doing is, as part of this process, is really what your consultant would have been doing a lot of this stuff. And the consultant does, you know... And the way you wanted to do it is you wanted me to do the preliminary screening, which would typically be done by a consultant as well. So I'm kind of doing double duty as part of this process, which is saving you about $30,000 by doing it in-house, so. But like I said, it may not be quite as robust as, you know, as a consultant would do. But I think we can work our way through this in a good way and end up with some good candidates for you to look at, so.
Sure. I just worry because we have a hard time even filling our committees. So it's going to be interesting to see how we can manage this too.
Yeah.
So.
But again, I think you want to make sure you get the best person you can find out there to fill this position. Because you've got major, huge wastewater issues coming up. You've got, you know, you've got a lot of significant issues for this community that you want to see a certain level of growth. And you need to get the right person in the mix to work with council, work with staff, to move forward with these sorts of things. And so to me, that's a really critical issue that you should be looking at, so.
Yeah, just one more question about the panel thing. So that would be if there's... If four panels are put together, so would that be four different interviews? Or would they all be in one room at the same time?
No, no, basically, what you typically do is you have the candidates come in. And while they're... If you had, say you had three candidates and you've got three panels, those panels that aren't the city council panel, those three panels would go through that process. And while one candidate is interviewing with panel A, then another candidate is interviewing with panel B and another... So it's a... It happens in the course of a day, where they'll go through all these interviews. And it's an exhausting day for the people, but you want someone that's got stamina to get through this kind of process. Because, you know, if they can't get through the interviews, I don't think you want them as a manager, so.
You really think we... Four panels seem like a lot, because that's what my question is, logistically.
Yeah.
Trying to read through a few of these. So that's what you're thinking, is four panels and that day they're going to go through it and they're going to give us, the council, the feedback and then...
Yeah, well, probably...
Take council's feedback and then they can...
The way it's often set up is the panels are held on one day and then the council does the interviews on a different day. Because then you can get the feedback from the panels as you're making your decision.
And those panels, we're just going to get feedback. We're not required to be...
There'll be reports from each of the panels. And council will do what you want to do with the feedback that you get. But a lot of times, you'll have a group that will have kind of, you know, pick up something totally different than what another group might pick up. And it's just... You want as many... There's going to be a lot of eyes on this position. And you want to... This is a good chance to put them in front of a bunch of eyes and get feedback from people what's going to work best, so.
Do you think we can get four panels?
Yeah.
You really do? You think a lot of people will do four panels?
I've got people that have expressed interest already. The superintendent said he'd be...
There's a lot of people like to judge people, so.
Yeah, that's exactly...
It's pretty simple.
That's exactly it, yeah.
Where would the superintendent... Which panel would we get?
He'd be on the panel that would be the professional.
Government managers from...
Government managers, so.
Local government managers from other jurisdictions?
Yep. So the, for example, the fire chief has expressed an interest. The district fire chief has expressed an interest in participating in that panel. Superintendent said he'd be delighted to participate in that panel. So it's kind of that group that's working for a government body. That will kind of have a set of questions that will really press the questions about working for a government body. And that'll be kind of the nature of their interviews, so.
So a couple of questions for you then.
Sure.
Who determines who's going to be in these bodies?
Council.
We will...
Right, so I'll have a potential list. If you've got people, we'll put a list together and council will make a decision about who will serve on those panels.
Okay.
Yeah, we're shooting for a number of people on those panels?
Probably four.
Probably four?
Yep.
So some of these people are going to be stakeholders that we've already discussed.
Could be, yeah.
If you've got eight, there's two panels right there. I'm curious to see what they have to say, because I'd like to get a united voice. But I don't want to get too deep in the weeds in this because, again, I do trust this council. I trust myself. I trust the department heads of the city. I would like feedback of business owners and stakeholders and Crestwell First and superintendent. Makes sense, because we all are going to have to work together. It'd be nice to have a unified voice or the majority of a unified voice. But I don't want to get too deep in the weeds. So we may have to... I'm good with this going forward, I guess, but we may need to clean it up a little bit.
Yeah, and I don't think for the council, again, these processes will probably occur on, like, the day before the council does your interview. And that way, reports can come back from those committees after you're done with your interview when you're deliberating on who you want to hire.
What do those reports look like?
Did you say...
I'm sorry. What would those reports look like? How in-depth are they going to be? Are they going to be simple suggestions and comments?
Yeah, it'd be simple suggestions and comments that'll be shared with the council.
Did you say the David Ford?
Would be the panels, right.
Would be the Ford. Well, that's what I'm thinking, trying to see. It sounds like... So if we have several applicants, it sounds like a lot to get organized. And then if we're paying for them to come over here, and then they would have to stay the night and then do it another... The next day? Do that interview the next day?
Yeah, typically for these jobs, it's not... It's, you know, typically it's a couple-day process, so. And that's kind of the normal process. And that gives, again, the community a chance to interact with these candidates, see how they interact with the public, see how they interact with council, see how they interact with the panels. And you just have a lot of good information to make the best decision you can going forward.
Okay.
And that final decision, regardless of what the, you know, what comes out of those panels... And those aren't public... Those panels aren't held in a, you know, it's not a public meeting sort of scenario. Those interviews are held with those panels individually. And that information is just conveyed to the council in the executive session.
One more, and I'll be done. And then you'll compile all this information and then just give it to us to go over?
Yeah, and probably use some staff to have a staff member at each of these panels so that they can compile that information to bring back to the council, I think. We'll work through those details.
Okay.
So from a council standpoint, again, you're really going to be designating a day to do these, your interview. So it's going to be, you know, it's going to take a good chunk of the day to get through the interviews, depending on if you get three or four or, you know, five applicants that you want to interview, so.
Okay.
Are these panels going to be signing any documents, swearing their secrecy?
Yeah. Basically, you know, at the point that the interviews are being done by this group, this group, the names will be publicly released as far as who the candidates are that the council has selected for final interviews. So the names are out there, but the processes are done in, you know, in executive meetings for the various groups. And there's certain information that isn't to be shared outside of those groups, so it's...
Right, so is there a document the panels will be signing to ensure that they don't leak?
Yeah, that's something I can incorporate in the process.
I'd agree. Some sort of minor NDA that you can't really discuss what you heard or what you talked about.
Yeah, because the other thing too is, you know, one candidate's going to be successful in this process and the other candidates aren't. And the one thing that you certainly want to avoid in this process is besmirching any other candidates that applied for this job and having negative information get out outside of, you know, this process about those candidates. So having a level of confidentiality is important for the folks that you end up bringing in for full interviews, so.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to ask that I've heard what you guys wanted to say. I want to hear... I do want to hear from everybody on this real quick of, is there anything you want to cut or anything you want to add? Are you okay with what we got for right now going forward?
Are we talking on just the timeline here?
On the process, the logistics of the panel.
We have to have a discussion on the qualifications and those sorts of things.
I just want to make sure I'm on this page.
Yeah, on the logistics part of this with the panels and everything, I feel like I am okay with it. I just...
I... The only thing I would say or add is that if we have multiple candidates that we want to look at, we may want to cut that back a little.
Definitely.
Okay.
So should the panels be two, three?
No, no, the panels aren't the issue.
Well, I mean contenders, so the panels only hit to where we have two or three candidates for city manager, not five.
And I would not go over four candidates.
I don't think we're going to have four, so.
Okay, because I mean, I appreciate the information, but I think that we don't want to be overwhelmed with information and just be overkill.
I don't want you to be underwhelmed and make a bad decision.
Sometimes too much information can just be kind of redundant and...
Well, if it's redundant and it backs up what you think is good, then you're on a really good, good, good.
Okay.
Is there a number of candidates in your mind?
Oh, gosh. Five. I think if we have five good candidates that we really want to interview, I think that's a good problem to have. If we go any more than five, I think we should probably scale it back a little.
That would be the mass.
I like three.
Three?
But wait until you see the candidates and then you can decide.
Right, exactly.
You may want two, you know. It's hard to say, so.
Yes, it all depends on what they...
Well, so the council needs to decide who's going to the panels. So we may only have two. But I think we need to have a cutoff there where we can review quickly to decide who goes to the panels. Because I don't want to...
What's that now?
To have the council...
It's going to be a council decision.
Of who goes to the panel. So whether it's five, 10, or two, we decide, okay, and then we'll do the panels and try and be efficient with that.
Yeah, so understand the council's going to be meeting an executive session for three specific times. One will be to review the initial pool of applicants. And I'll have some recommendations who I think are qualified. And if council's in agreement with that list, then I'm going to be conducting Zoom interviews, which will be a brief interview with those candidates. And then I'm going to be bringing that report back to council to say, these are the folks that you thought were, you know, that you wanted to Zoom interviews for. And I conducted the Zoom interviews. This is what I found. Who do you want to invite for full interviews? And so then, at that point, council's going to meet an executive session. And you're going to say, we would like candidates A, B, C, and D. And/or A, B, and C, or A and B. We won't go beyond E. But, you know, it'll be up to the council on who you want to bring in for the full interviews. It's going to be up to the council about who's going to be invited for a brief Zoom interview just to make contact with these candidates and make sure that they are who they are. And then it's going to be the mayor's decision, subject to confirmation by council, of who you're going to hire for city manager.
Confirmation meeting of the majority of council. Do you have anything you want to add on this?
I think it sounds like a good process, you know, major twice, cut once. I don't think you can get too much information on the good candidates. But I agree. I think that... I don't know how many applicants we'll get. I'm new to this sort of hiring. I've hired a lot of people.
Yeah, I think we have like seven on an interim, but I think some of them are planning for the job we've been...
For the big one?
Yeah.
There's going to be a number of candidates. And I think some that I think are going to be potential strong contenders, so.
Okay. Yeah, I would think that... I mean, I wouldn't want to say a number, three or four, because you never know, but, you know, four... you, you never know, but, you know, four keeps coming into my mind.
Yeah, and when you see the-
As a reasonable-
Yeah, when you see the candidates, that number will become pretty clear, and maybe there's only three you want to talk to.
Right, right.
And so-
Or two.
So, you know, that, but that's going to, all those decisions are going to be this group around the table, plus, or can't?
Stacy, you got anything to add?
No, not on the process. I, I agree with you that, that narrowing down the three that go onto the panel will make things a lot easier, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the next thing, uh-
Oh, one second.
Wait, sorry, I interrupted.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with this process right here, and I don't think that we could put a number on it, because, you know, we might have one good candidate, next thing you know, you might have five. I mean, we were blessed last time, um, but we can't limit ourselves on the prosperity that Creswell needs, so.
And there's no need to do that either, at this point, because that's going to be your decision before the full interview, so. But, once this resolution is, is adopted, that's going to put into motion these, these steps, so.
Mm-hmm.
So it's important to be comfortable with the, with the steps outlined here, so.
Alan?
I'm good with these steps, I've already read through them, they look good.
The, uh, the thing I want to work through, uh, in, in some detail here is Appendix A, and, um, and that's at the, and it follows the resolution, and, uh, and this really kind of compiles the city manager profile. And the first section is required minimum education and experience. At the work session, there was, uh, uh, some thought that, uh, that a bachelor's degree might be desired, but, um, you wanted to have a little more flexibility in that, and so the flexibility that I plugged in here was two years of higher education, uh, if they had 10 years of upper-level local government management experience as a, uh, as a, uh, to offset the not having a degree. And, and so, again, first part to talk about is that section there, and, and how you want to have that going forward, so.
What do you consider upper-level?
Yeah.
That was my question.
That was not worrying.
Yeah, yeah, and I couldn't figure a better way to word it. Um, it provides some flexibility, so it's not necessarily an associate's degree, uh, it could be someone that's had, um, uh, you know, you know, two years in, in higher education experience that, that, uh, you know, that can document that they actually did that. And so, so that's, that's one of the, uh, one of the things that you need to think about.
Well, could we just eliminate, I think if we just said at least five years of government management experience, then you're not, then you're, you're expanding the, it doesn't have to be local, like, somebody might have state-level government experience, or even federal-level government experience, probably not likely, but, you know, you just never know. And so, but that, that kind of, I don't think we have to be so specific, I guess is what I'm getting at. Um, just my thoughts.
Are you talking about for both lines, the first?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think for both lines.
Well, I think the first line's probably okay, because it's just preferred. But then the second line is, is where you're looking at the, what you're going to consider as exceptions to that.
What? Wait, 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 what?
Because this says or.
No, I, I'm, where are you at?
Required minimum education, so city manager position requires a bachelor's degree in public administration, planning, political science, or, or related field, and at least five years of upper-level local government management experience, or two years of higher education and 10 years of upper level. That's the way I structured it, but if you want to restructure that somehow-
Well, I, I thought, the way the first sentence is structured, it, it makes it sound like you have to have the bachelor's degree and the five years of government experience, management experience.
That's what it's written right now, so if you want to modify that, uh, tell me what you want, so.
Uh, I think I'm okay with it, I just think that the upper-level local, I don't think those words are necessary.
So just government management experience?
Oh-
Yeah, but that's just my thought.
Oh, well, and I'm, I thought it was up to the second comma, or it was either from the comma, the, the first section, the first sentence to the first comma.
I'm so lost, can you just-
The city manager position requires a bachelor's degree in public administration, planning, political science, or related field, and at least five years of upper-level local government management experience, okay? That's for the minimum requirement. Or two years, so I thought it was either, if you, you, and you could replace that, if you don't have-
That's the way I structured it.
If you don't have the first section, and you have the second section, you're-
You've got 10 years of government experience, then you're still qualified.
Yes, and then, uh, I like what you said, that the way it is written, um, even with the upper level, provides some kind of leeway.
Right.
Depending on what is on that actual application, provides us flexibility-
Correct.
For us to determine what is upper level.
Whether that meets what you think is two years of upper-level education.
So I kind of like that.
Yeah, it leaves that in your ballpark.
But we could remove the upper level as well, and it would still do the same thing.
Well, I'd be fine with leaving upper level and just removing local. I think that if we're limiting people to local government experience, that's egregious. I think a lot of people have broad experience outside of just local government that is applicable.
You would want to remove local?
Just the word local.
Just the word local.
Yeah, so upper-level government management experience versus upper-level local government management experience.
I agree with that.
Strike local?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I'm not the end-all, but yeah.
Okay, well, and I, but I thought we wanted to focus around here.
Well, just not the experience doesn't have to be around here.
Yeah, and, and I don't think this is, I don't think in this document, local refers to Creswell. I think-
Sure, no, yeah, State of Oregon.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, local, local government was specifically referring to-
To city.
City, county.
Municipality.
Okay, okay.
Right, I think that that's what he's referring to in this.
Okay, okay.
And my, my point being is that I don't think we should limit ourselves to that experience.
Yeah, and I think taking local out is fine, I don't think that's a problem.
It keeps the, upper level is still, um, you know, flexible, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, and would there be any issue with that last seven sentence? Equivalent combinations of education and experience may be considered Oregon local government experience is helpful. Could, that could not be, instead of helpful, preferred?
You probably could say preferred, I think.
I think helpful is fine, too, I mean-
Yeah.
And you can leave local in that sentence, and it doesn't, it doesn't make it, 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 I mean-
Yeah, it's just, just basically-
It's just saying, hey, this, it would be helpful if you had this experience, right?
I like helpful.
Okay, I, I like preferred, but helpful is fine?
I, I, yeah.
It, it, I think it, uh, provides us that flexibility that we probably going to need.
Yep. Yeah, it gives you, you know, I tried to write this in a way that wouldn't exclude some potential candidates for this position, that could be good city managers, that may not have a four-year degree, but have, you know-
I think that name's been tossed around a few times.
What's that?
I think there's a name that's being tossed around that just, that that's being considered for.
Will this, will we be looking outside of the state, too?
The decision, or the recommendation or thoughts of the, the council, uh, previously was to focus on, uh, just advertising in the state.
Okay.
I like that idea.
Yeah, so that's kind of what, there was a consensus on that at the work session that we advertised. So that would be with the LOC, that'll be with some of the state local professional organizations, that'll be with local media, um, ads, uh, you know, we're exploring, uh, you know, what other avenues that we can get, get this word out, so. But not, to, a lot of times, these, these jobs are, are posted in the International City Managers Association, uh, which would be a, a national, nationwide search, and there was a desire not to do that, so.
The cost was great.
Yeah.
Well, and I think we discussed if, if we didn't feel like we were getting anywhere locally, that we would-
Then we could expand.
Revisit the search, right, didn't we?
There, there was, yeah, discussion about that, so.
Right.
But I, I think you're going to get some candidates that are going to be good candidates that are going to apply, so.
Well, you already said you're out of the question.
I am out of the question, so. Okay, so I think, I think we've got a consensus on the, on the department's end.
Mm-hmm.
And the only change to that is we're taking out, um-
Strike local.
Local.
Local, yep.
Yep.
In the first two instances, I think the last sentence we can keep, right?
Just the first.
Mm-hmm.
What's that now? Stacy?
We're just striking out the first two instances of local.
Of local, but keeping local in the last.
I think local, we're keeping the last one, right?
Yes, or really.
That makes a lot of sense, so.
Okay.
The, uh, basically, in going through these various interviews and reviewing the surveys, there were a number of themes that kept on popping up, um, and that's kind of what I focused on here, and these came from the council interviews as well. Um, and if you had a chance to, and if you haven't had a chance to read through some of the comments, there, there was a lot of good information that people were sharing about the city, so if you haven't done that, uh, at this point, uh, you know, I'd encourage you to kind of work your way through that. But what I tried to do is pull what I was hearing, uh, from the council specifically. The only one that, uh, obviously I haven't talked to is Mark, uh, not Mark, but, uh, Alan on this, uh, issue, because Alan just joins us tonight, so. But, um, but the, I talked to the current council members, I talked to the council members that were going off in the last, uh, time period, uh, Mayor Stram and, and counselors,
Shelley.
Shelley. Shelley and-
Osborn.
Osborn, yep, thank you. I'm at the age where I need multiple choice, so I'll throw those names out, so. But, um, but anyway, I, I, I think, you know, I think these are pretty good lists, and it's broken down by, you know, desired skills, um, professional characteristics, support for city council, support for staff, and care for Creswell. Now, those were kind of the categories that sort of popped out during all these interviews that I did, and, and reviewing the, uh, the, uh, surveys, you know, those were kind of the general themes that kind of kept on popping up, so. And, and again, the desired, these are, are not binding, but it helps the candidate sort of determine, you know, am I fit to, you know, potentially apply for this job? It'll help the council when you're evaluating the candidates to see how they best fit to some of these profile issues, so. So they're, they're really kind of statements that, that kind of help determine the fit, both for the applicant and for the council, when you're making a decision on who you're hiring.
And we, and agree to all this, this is something that we'll see, the document, the way you got it presented-
Yep.
When they apply, they'll see some of this support for Creswell, the, um-
This will be the document that, in fact, Caitlin's making changes as we go, so that we can approve this.
So the care for Creswell, concerns of issues facing Ethica. I like all that.
Is, um, staff going to give any feedback about who their recommendations are?
Well, there will be a staff, as far as the candidates go?
Yes.
Yeah, there'll be a staff panel.
Okay.
Uh, that'll be one of the, the three panels that meets before the council does their interviews on the day before. And that staff panel will have a recommendation, or will, they, they really won't have a recommendation, but they will talk to you about what they saw with the different candidates, and if they had any concerns or questions about it, that'll be information that'll be provided to the council before you make your decision, so. Anything you want taken out, anything you want added in?
Feels like you covered most, I mean, you got it all in there. It's always rewarding, but that's been a little persnickety, so I'm happy the way it is.
And we, and I'm going to keep on plowing ahead here, if you want to pop back to something, just yell and we'll pop back, but then, future issues facing the city of Creswell, um, again, these were generated by these various interviews as well. Um, and, uh, and, uh, and, again, if there's something that you want to add, or something you want to take out here, again, this is helpful for the candidates to have some idea of what, what they're getting into, if they apply for this position and are hired by the council, if the mayor and council as city managers, so.
The only one I'm going to bring up that I don't like is expanding all types of housing. I'm going to be honest, I would like to expand single-family housing.
Yeah.
I'm fine to take the majority on that one, but that's my want and will for Creswell. Stacy?
I would just recommend striking all types of, and just writing, "Expanding housing to offer affordable options," um, or "Expanding housing," um, to, to mitigate our shortage, you know, something, but I agree. I mean, I don't know that it really matters that much, though.
I may not, I may not, but it's something I want to say.
It's still helpful to make sure it's conveying what the council wants to convey to the candidates, so. So, but, and, and I want to make sure it's conveyed, you know, you know, based on, you know, what the, what, what's important to the council, so.
Yeah, I agree that we don't want high rises in Creswell, so being specific there, yeah.
There's one, there is one little thing, and I'm not sure, it may be, it may be in here already, but somebody had made this comment, and I really, really appreciated this comment that was written. It says, "Diligence in carrying out city council directives and implementing the strategic plan." I think that that would be something, um-
Mm-hmm.
Very, very nice to be included in the city manager profile.
Yeah, that, we can add that under support for-
It's way in the back.
For city staff, yeah.
Way in the back page, somebody, somebody wrote that, and I think that's just a great comment.
Can you, can you read that one more time?
Diligence in carrying out city council directives and implementing the strategic plan.
Yes, and Shelley said that.
I'll give her credit for that. Shelley, I bet she said that, I'll give her credit for that one.
Well, then I, and I, I think, you know, that's our, that's our roadmap.
It was a strategic plan, you're, you're absolutely right.
But it, it was, well-
Did you get that?
It is, it is our roadmap, none of us decided on it. Oh, maybe you were here for it, yeah.
Caitlin?
What direction did we want to go with the housing one? Sorry, we talked about removing all types, but what one do you guys want?
I just put, "Expanding housing." Here you go, call for a formal option.
Expanding housing, okay.
And did you get the last edition from Alonso?
I have the diligence for carrying out the strategic plan. Is there one point for the strategic plan?
Diligence in carrying out council's direction, or directives and the strategic plan.
Okay.
And that's going under-
Uh, support for city council.
Support. Maybe probably the first one, right?
Yeah, we can plug that out.
Maybe it'd be the first bullet?
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you think?
There's consensus on that, or?
We're talking.
Alonso, would you be, would you be supportive of that being the first bullet, under support for the city council?
Uh, yes. About the strategic plan? Yes, absolutely.
What about you guys? Good?
Yeah. Put that first under that.
But after we come back with our items, discussion items B and C, that we may not be able to hold to the expanding all type of, just housing. I think that's going to be up the table.
Goals, that's why they're called goals.
Any other comments on future issues facing the city of Crestwell?
I think you've done, that's a few, that's a couple of years right there.
Yeah.
That covers a lot.
Well, the one thing, too, just a bit of feedback on, on the decision you're making, it's, it's certainly not, hopefully not a two-year decision, you know, hopefully the person that you're hiring is going to be here for a while, because, you know, it really takes a couple of years before someone's actually generally at full production, where they, you know, kind of understand the community and they can, can, you know, make things happen, so, so I think you certainly want to look for someone that's going to be able to, to be here for, for a while, and whether they are or not, it's always hard to say how that'll work out, but, but, you know, having some longevity in this position can really be helpful in making things work for, for the council and for the city of Crestwell, so.
We'll just bring you back. All right, what's next?
Okay, so, the last thing is, is on the compensation range for the position, and we provided some comparative data for you to look at, what this position is being paid in, in other communities, and what communities we're advertising, and, and in the, the other thing to be aware of is our, our top department heads are at a hundred and twenty thousand, a little over a hundred and twenty thousand a year, and so obviously the bottom of this has to be above, above the people they're supervising. But, you know, we need to plug in a range here for the, for the announcement that'll go out on the, for this, for this job, because that, that really determines a lot of who may apply for this job or who may not apply for this job, so.
It's probably the first thing you're going to look at.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, so do you have the, the data?
I know there was a survey on.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's an attachment in the report to.
I'm on the 140s, I thought it was deeper in the agenda here.
Yeah, it's right, right at the very end, just before you get to Second Street.
Page 151 of the PDF.
Thank you. And actually, I ran some hard copies of that, if anyone needs that.
Recent, recent city manager job listings from the League of Oregon Cities?
Yeah, so these are the ones in the last year that had salary ranges attached to them.
Well, Utah, my goodness.
Well, some, yeah, some people, other states will advertise in Oregon.
Well, and you have that, there's a pretty good comparison, right, in the beginning, when you speak about the Tillamook. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good comparison.
It was, yeah.
I mean, and I think that, I don't think it's fair to use out of state, other than Oregon.
But it's also a different base of people paying the salary to people in Tillamook.
The population is 5,195, it's actually a little less than, than Crestwell.
And Tillamook's not a wealthy city either, so, and I think Crestwell has more income, based on the experience that I've had, that Crestwell has a fairly high income. In fact, Tillamook will qualify for, for programs that Crestwell won't qualify for because of the standard of living in Crestwell.
We're a bedroom community for.
In Tillamook, yeah.
It's 10 more grand than our finance director, so.
Well, and some of those grants, too, we're looking at ODOT grants, and I know Mark looked at some, too, but there was like a limit, like 5,500 was kind of like that magical number, where we were missing out on millions of dollars, and that, that, that stinks.
Yeah, yeah.
That arbitrary number for no random.
There's a lot of arbitrary numbers in a lot of the programs that are out there, and figuring out where you fit is always important when you're considering any, any grant program. But to me, that, that Tillamook range is about the closest comparable, and.
Brookings is right around that same thing, too, so.
A little bit higher. They did a lot, a lot more with tourism in Brookings.
They do, a lot of retirees from California.
Tillamook is, because they don't have much to pass through, there's not much to stay there, it's pretty.
I have lots of family that lives there.
Farming culture.
Yeah, and they have.
I mean Tillamook, though, like, like Tillamook, there's not really a lot to stop and.
Besides the cheese factory?
Yeah, that's it.
They got dairy cows, you guys got the house there, so.
Well, I'll just come out and say that I think the salary range on the exhibit for Tillamook there on the PDF page 151 seems like a reasonable hiring range to me. I agree.
The 1, the 130?
Page 150, PDF, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
130 to 165,000.
I think that gives you a lot of latitude if you're someone with less experience.
I'm, I'm good with it. Typically on the city manager's job, is it a yearly increase, or is it based on the budget that we do with the?
Yeah, typically it's based on the evaluation that the council does of the, of the manager, and then it, as a separate action, you adjust the compensation, but, you know.
Because they still get the PERS, but they don't have the step.
They get the COLA still.
They get the COLA on top of a raise.
And typically in the first, depends on where you hire them in. If you hire them in on the upper end, they have some understanding that, that that's where they're going to, going to be, other than the COLAs. If you, if you get someone that's, that's got less experience, but is, is a real go-getter for the community, and you're, you know, and, and they, they need to build experience, you'd be wanting to look at adjustments for them as they're gaining that experience here in Crestwell, to keep them in Crestwell, if you, you know, if they're doing a good job, so.
These are all things that would be in the final contract, correct?
Right, so the contract itself would have what the starting compensation is, and typically the contracts have an evaluation and a review by the, by the council. But in looking at this, my, my recommendation to you would be the Tillamook range is, I think that's where you're at, so. And plus, you're quite frankly in a more competitive labor market, being in the Eugene-Springfield area, you know, which, you want to make sure that you're, you're getting someone that's going to be here for a while, you know, because you don't want them taking this job and in two years, jumping up to, to another job, if you can prevent it, so.
So is everybody good with that?
The.
The 130, 165?
Tillamook range, yeah.
And I think, I think we have survived this process, at, to this point, anyway, and so I think we've got the data we need. Caitlin's going to make the revisions, which are fairly minor, to the appendix, and we'll have that ready for, after the Second Street discussion, for you to meet in special session, hold a public hearing, which is required for public comment, and then go forward with approving the resolution.
Okay.
And then we'll be off and running. I'm going to be very busy trying to get these things all out.
It's like you've already been very busy.
It sure does.
I do, I do have to say, I, I really have enjoyed.
You're earning your money.
Yeah, and I've enjoyed the conversations I've had with these folks, and there is a real passion and love for Crestwell from the folks I talked to, and so I think, I think it's definitely a special community, and, and, and people were very grateful to be part of this process, so, you know, and providing, you know, being asked for their input on it, they, they were greatly appreciative of that, so. I gave credit to that, to the mayor and council, from the work session that we had when we discussed doing it this way, and, and so, I, I think this is going to be a great process. Hopefully we get some great candidates, and you get a candidate that you're very comfortable with moving forward, so. And I do want to retire in Newport this summer, so I'm, I'm motivated to get you through this process.
You had your chance.
We twisted general. Does that, that cover, finish the city manager?
That covers that item, and we can go to Second Street.
To Second Street.
What's that?
Is it okay if I go grab those? I have them done.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anybody want to take a five-minute recess? Anybody want to use the bathroom? Take a five-minute recess.
Don't send that through the table now, so.
Yeah, we had a table, yeah.
So, I noticed there's a typo there.
Okay.
We're trying to finish basketball first, but yeah, we got to, it's supposed to start next week, but we got three, three more weeks of basketball, so. And the rain isn't slowing up any, so we'll see what happens. At least get the batting cages out, hopefully get the kids in there.
Do you got any?
Yeah, we did those, about a month ago, or actually January 1st or 2nd, I think, so we kind of got all the kids lined up for the most part, and so we know who's going to be where, and what I'm getting, what everybody else is getting, and I got another team that's half experienced and half not even close. See what happens. I look forward to it, it's fun.
It's growth.
Yeah, it's, it's usually pretty fun, Bay Harbor takes it pretty darn seriously, though. We'll, we'll see what happens, because we, we got some kids, like my son should have been able to move up, they were strict on his age, but even though he, he was reviewed and assessed and told it, yes, he can move up. They wouldn't let him because of his age.
So what's going on here?
Damn, instead of coaching.
Well, go to your PDF, the, the next tab.
Yeah, Socks, I'm glad with.
There you go, put that tab, just put it.
Like I said, half the kids I coached last year, the other half not so much.
So, so when you open up, every time you open up, you can.
The only thing is that the double A is kid pitch, so it's a lot slower game, you might only get like three hits, there ain't a lot of balls where you have to play.
So you just, you just have losses, you don't open up, you'll lose your PDF. You're a match of mail, and then once you open it up, if you already have this tab, you just.
I enjoy the baseball too.
You really don't see it doing anything, it's confusing, right? Yeah, and then now, you can, to get to any page, you just type it in there.
She's like, let me check with the sheriff's office. I do have other days, so that's nice. I usually go like, hit the bat, set the pitching machine up so they don't stop breaking anything, but she has a really nice.
She'd be able to just do 153, go backspace.
Very gracious of you.
And then she should be able to just hit enter now.
Her parents could sit here, and just sit, chairs right there, and kind of hang out while we practice and stuff, and nobody's getting wet, which is really nice. No, it's a full, it's like an amazing riding arena.
I work for an interview company. I'm a, I don't see people or anything, I'm a senior business analyst, yeah, I'm behind the scenes. My customers.
I couldn't read my writing, and Caitlin couldn't read her writing, so.
No, that's, that's great, you know, sometimes, sometimes we get off. When I, I, you take her, Hal, Hal Lane, and she's like right there, kind of renting the Chapman property.
The department that studies industry trends.
She has a bench there and stuff, and it's, she's got an outdoor.
Yes, it's all analytical.
Nice, and she's got another one that's kind of outdoor, but. She stables horses.
We just, yeah, yeah, actually, you know what? You know where the confusion was?
She's very helpful with the bridge, she don't have a charge map.
Has been an explorer, so she was on her mail stack, so she was like, I can't find the.
Little kids in here.
Yeah.
She's doing it next time.
Right, and totally on track.
What we were talking about.
You just have to learn, though, right? Just do it over and over, and that's how I learn, always.
I've been trying to help a bit, but like.
He needs to be able to open up this index, open up this line, and then, and then you can just jump down.
Try to advertise, get some dollars there.
This just shows all the pages.
Yeah, we're not getting that index.
Yeah, and that was so much easier. That way you don't have to scroll through eighty pages to find one memo.
Now, if you want to find a page really quick, because you maybe know where it's at, you can hit that far left there, and go like this.
Oh, yeah, well, that's.
You can scroll.
As you all know, I wish I was grants for baseball.
Yes, he's right, the menu is.
Yeah, menus.
That part still should be in a, and actually, added in, have a cover page.
It, it will be, like I said, I wish we could have moved up, and I'm also kind of maybe, my wife reminds me, I should be thankful.
That's all right.
You know, because I do need to keep the kids together, and I can imagine the first year kid pitch.
I can tell him, I can tell him.
Those kids are throwing the ball.
Halfway down my eye.
Yeah, that would be kind of rough, like, that is going to be rough here, like, they're just learning how to pitch, and you just have kids that may or may not pitch.
I know, guys don't, they don't.
You gotta count pitches, and there's a lot more, a lot more coaches got to do. I'm going to take it, especially coming into this.
Oh, you look like you have a black eye.
With the referees here, most of the kids are.
Nobody's having anything.
We get a, we're just playing.
Is that a black eye?
Most of the coaches are helping out, all coaches.
None of my business.
Easy transition, but I'm taking on this new chair here, responsibility, yeah.
Two, two, back-to-back, historical water rate decreases or decreases in a row. That's crazy.
Oh, do we have another one?
Yeah.
So, and we tried to fight, you and I tried to, no, we raised it 1%.
No, no, that was, no, that was.
That was last year.
The year before, we tried to.
It was last year.
We tried to make it zero, and we got.
You and I tried to make it zero, and they wanted a percent, well, guess what that percent did? Made us take in so much money, we were able to give a 5% discount this year.
That's great. No, last year was zero.
But we tried to.
The year before that was the one, we tried to get one.
I'm pretty sure last year was one.
Oh, it was zero, no.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you and I wanted zero last year, because we thought the one was petty.
No, it was zero, wasn't it zero?
We have to ask.
It was zero last year.
Yeah, it was zero.
The rate?
It was?
Yes.
Water rates last year were zero?
No.
Zero water rate.
I guess it was the one.
Yes, and the year before that was one.
And that's the one you and I tried to find.
And we tried, and we tried to go zero, and this.
We tried to go zero that year, too.
We should have, I know, we knew, we knew.
Even Michelle was in support of going zero.
Yeah.
Because she said it was the fiduciary thing.
To do, the responsible, yeah.
And I think the decision you guys made is a good decision, and the production, so.
Ready? Bring them back. Jumping back into 4F, Second Street Project and Local Improvement District. Spencer, Cliff, Jim, everybody, if you're involved in this one. Is Caitlin not back?
Oh, yeah, no, she's not back.
Anyway, she's the quiet one, so I didn't realize she wasn't back here.
Good. Make sure the recorder's going.
No, it's right.
No, it's right here.
There she is. I started without you, then realized you were not here.
Please, I'm crying.
Is it recording?
Yeah, it's recording.
I'll take them all.
Okay.
Just so we don't mix them up for the. Okay.
Thanks, Caitlin.
We ready?
Yes, sir.
So on February 10th, council approved a resolution declaring the council's intent to initiate improvements to Second Street and initiate the process for an LID. Again, that action taken by the council at that meeting is one of three steps that have to be taken going forward. At any point, council can, can, can modify, it's the direction you want to go on, on the LID, so there's a lot of flexibility up until the third meeting, which is kind of the final meeting in the whole, whole process, where the LID is formally established, and that would be at the April, the council meeting. Council had a discussion on the property assessments to be discussed at the, the, at this session tonight, and one of the things that we'll talk a little bit about, just to make sure everyone's on the same page with, with what these options were, we'll kind of work our way through the options that we presented at that time. Again, those options on, on the costs were, were things that we came up with at a staff level as alternatives, based on the council's concern over the cost of the initial LID, and, and, and there's other options council could consider, you know, in moving forward. The other part of this issue, too, is the, this is all part of the plan that the council adopted a couple of years ago, in order to provide some, some dollars to upgrade streets over a regular period of time for the city, and it was a combination of the, the tough fee or the, the utility fee that's, that's being charged, and utilizing LID, so it was that combination of funding, that was the formula that the council was able to, to do a major street project every three years going forward in the future, and, and so one of the considerations with, with this, and we've got some, some numbers that, that Jim pulled together, is if you ended up reducing the LID or not charging an LID for this project, what kind of dollars would have to be made up in the tough fee going forward in order to keep on that, that three-year rotation of projects to, to improve streets in Crestwell? The, the other option the council has is, is to push back the schedule, instead of every three years, every four or five years of doing a major street project, you know, so that's also an option that the council could consider. Certainly, in reviewing the condition of, of streets in Crestwell, there needs to be some reinvestment in streets, and that's something that popped up quite a few times during my interviews with folks, about the need to reinvest in streets in Crestwell. Those are probably folks that weren't being assessed for it, but, but, you know, they, there's a recognized need that, that if you don't make any investment in your streets, you're going to have, you know, streets continuing to deteriorate, and that's a, can be a problem as well. At the February 20th meeting, there was also some concerns about the survey, survey work that was done, and just for your information, and we'll share this with the property owners, our consulting engineer has contacted the county surveyor, and the county surveyor will be in the next three weeks to review these corners, to determine whether or not, you know, they either agree with the survey that was conducted, or they feel there was a problem with the survey that was conducted. So that'll be an independent party that'll come in to kind of evaluate, evaluate the, the survey that was done, which was a major concern that we heard about at the last meeting. The other thing is, again, we, at that meeting, said we would schedule a, a staff meeting with, which is going to be held on Wednesday, February 26th, at 6:00 PM in this room, and, and that discussion is really going to be taking a look at what's actually being proposed for this project, how it impacts individual properties as far as the, the construction goes, and to give the residents an opportunity to, to then ask specific questions about their property, because I think one of the, one of the things that's happened with this project is, there's, everyone has a little piece of information about what's proposed, but there's also been a lot of discussion of. a lot of discussion that the engineers have taken a look at to modify some, what was originally included in the projects, which will alleviate some of the concerns that some of the residents have, but nobody really knows, you know, what those are and so, the one thing that we want to try to accomplish is, is to make sure everyone knows what's actually currently being proposed for this project, because it has evolved over the last year that the council's been talking about going forward with this project a bit and making sure everyone is aware of, of what's physically going to, going to be proposed for the project. Now, one question that came up tonight and, and we'll talk about this on, on Wednesday as well, there, there was a question about the work that's currently going on, on Second Street at this point and as you, as you know, the council authorized the wastewater work to be done, so we could get that work done prior to the construction project, so that's one thing that's happening out there. The second thing that our city crews are doing are lowering water lateral lines that were going to be in the way of any proposed project and so, our city crews are, are putting in new lateral lines to the homes through that area to, to make sure that when the, you know, the project goes forward, the, the water lateral lines aren't in the way, which will help expedite, you know, the, the project, if the project's awarded by the council later this spring to go forward. The work that's being done is not the project and, and I think that's the important thing that people need to realize is we haven't started the project. We're taking care of some of the things that need to be taken care of from a utility standpoint in that road and again, whether we have a project or not, this is good work to get completed and it will address some of the infiltration problems that the city has in that location and, and, and the renewal of the water lateral lines is, is going to be a benefit to the property owners there as well. And so, that's the work that's currently going on, on the street at this particular point in time. I think from an LID standpoint, Mr.
One sec.
Real quick, when did you say the county was going to come and take a look at that survey?
In about three weeks.
In about three weeks?
Yeah, that's the last.
Correct. It was, it was submitted to the county mid-last week and it takes about four weeks for them to get to it and, and review it, so about three, three and a half weeks, they should have some information back from the county.
Appreciate having sex with eyes. I think the homeowners, even the ones that are super frustrated, at least see that we're trying to make a serious effort to be as honest and fair as we can.
Yeah, and we want to, we want to know where the property lines are, so if there's a question about it, we want to make sure that.
So, if there is a discrepancy, either if it's fine, we just keep moving and if there's a discrepancy, we, the same thing, we just kind of figure it out as we go.
Might be buying land.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple of issues and then maybe, Cliff, do you want to address what the potential outcomes are, but one of the things that the design engineer has done is he's, you know, in the current plan, he's moved the sidewalk closer to the street from what was in the original plan, which was requiring us to get access easements from individual property owners, but you want to.
I can address that a little bit. So, the original project was, was billed to the right-of-way line, which was going to give us the, with the sidewalk that you see downtown, that's within the downtown plan, because the section is in the downtown plan, which is eleven-foot sidewalks. Since then, we have a few property owners that are disputing where the right-of-way line is, where the property line is, and there's also some corners that we would need to purchase some easements from. We have the engineers go back and look and see if we can pull the sidewalk back and not make the sidewalk as wide in some of those areas, so we wouldn't have to deal with that discrepancy. So, we're going to narrow up some of the sidewalks and instead of taking some of the corners, we're going to do a larger bulge out on some of those corners, so we think we have alleviated the property line issues.
Shrink the foot on the street there a little bit.
Even if the right-of-way lines are right, wrong, incorrect or correct, we're probably just going to follow.
Go around.
New engineering plan to go around and not have those issues to deal with moving forward.
So, so the, Gary Longnectar is back here as well and he met with me and, and he's got concerns about the, obviously, the impact that these costs will have with the property owners on the street. He also was asking me a question about, he's asked a hundred feet of frontage and he was wondering why in the initial assessment it was showing a hundred and twenty-four feet and that's going to be a decision that, again, policy-wise, we'll talk with the council because it wraps around part of the corner. And, and one of the options that we presented to council is on the corner lots, just assessing the long side, so that twenty-four feet would go away. But again, concern about the expense of the, the project and, and also concern about stormwater and, and Cliff, why don't you talk a little bit about the benefit that this project's going to have for some of the stormwater issues on, on, on the street, so.
Yeah, so right now, the street has gravelled shoulders on the majority of it and the runoff actually either goes on private property or pools and ponds up and creates kind of a hazard for traffic. This project is going to get rid of all of that shoulder and you're going to have curb gutter sidewalk and you're, there really isn't a good storm system down through there. There's quite a few little ditches that run into some catch basins, so you're going to have a complete storm system, curb gutter and sidewalk and all of the storm will run into a collective system that will generate a flow over to kind of railroad tracks, so all of the storm system will be new, improved and there won't be any of those issues on that street.
So, again, from a stormwater standpoint, you know, the problems that the folks have on that street are definitely going to be improved with this project. And, and again, to have a full-fledged curb and gutter and storm sewer system, that's going to convey that water right out without impacting the property that is currently impacted. One thing that I wanted to review a bit here is, oh, the other thing too is I did attach a letter posing the LID from, from Buck Bazinet, which is attached to the packet for your review as well. But one of the things that I wanted to refer to is, there's a page that looks like this in the, in the report, so it's about five, five pages in and it's what costs can be included in a Second Street LID. And I think there was some confusion while we were talking about this at the last meeting about what this actually meant. And so, the, just so that everyone understands is on the same page with what these options were. The first option, the property owners were being assessed for a six-foot of sidewalk and curb and gutter and, and that was, if they were on a corner lot, it was a whole corner and that total cost that was, was being assessed was four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars and at two hundred and seven dollars per linear foot. So, so that, that's the original thing that, that you first reviewed and when you saw that, you said, we need to do something different to that. So, the second option is, is again, a modification of, you know, taking out the cost for thickening the sidewalks every place where driveways are and these sorts of things and that, that took out some money and brought down that cost to a hundred and fifty-one dollars per front foot. The next option, the third option here was, was narrowing what we're going to assess to the property owners is just that first five feet of sidewalk. So, whether it's an eleven-foot sidewalk or a six-foot sidewalk, the most that anyone would pay would be a five-foot width, which is our minimum residential sidewalk in, in the city of Crestwell. And, and again, four inches thick and, and long side only. So, on the corner lots, we would assess the long side of the lot, not the short side of the lot, to give the property owners who have cornered property some, some relief on that. That brought it down to about a hundred and twelve dollars a foot. And then the last option is the same thing as, as that last option, except the city would absorb the engineering costs for this project, that brought it down to ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents a foot. There's, there's a chart that Cliff put together right at the end of my report that looks like this and that chart, that chart shows the, the, what the original amount of the assessment would be, what the lot, the full, full amount of assessing four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars out. The last one is, is our lowest cost assessment of what those costs would be, you know, based on the, the property that's there and again, that's assessing a five-foot side on the long side of corner lots only. And again, that, that generates a hundred and sixty-two thousand in revenue for the city. And so, again, that compares on that chart, the most expensive with the, the lowest cost one that we had on this chart. And as you remember, you know, back in, in fifteen years ago, the, or as you may remember, the linear costs per front foot for, for sidewalk curbs and gutters was, was, you know, under fifty bucks a foot and that, that's the last assessment that, that was, was done fifteen years ago in, in the city. And so, anyway, these, these are some, gives you a chance to take a look at how individual property owners would be impacted with, you know, these two options and, and there's, you know, there's other options the council could consider going forward with as well. The last thing too, before we get to questions, if that's okay, is, you know, there was discussion too about, about seeking grants for, for these projects. You know, if, if we have a school in this area, the Safe Routes to, to School program would be a potential grant agent, you know, funding that we could seek, you know, if they're going to, depending on what kind of funding they're going to get, because those are federal funds that are given to the state and then administered by the state. And then, and then, you know, the other options for getting funding now would, are really surrounding expansion of housing, or there's some industrial development that a road needed to be improved. You know, those are, quite frankly, the, the primary things that you might be able to be competitive on a grant for, for doing a street in any, any, you know, city like Second Street, there's, there's just not really any programs to do that and if you were going to do that, you know, obviously, that would, would be pushing the project down the road, because it's usually a couple of years cycle by the time you apply, by the time it gets reviewed, by the time you get a grant agreement, you know, it's a, it's a fairly long process there and I think the odds of getting a grant are really pretty minimal for a street like Second Street unless there was a housing development going up or, or something else or, you know, like I said, there is an old school on Second Street, Crestwell first, but that, that's not going to come for Safe Routes to School. But, but, so I think the bottom line is, you know, local units of government are dependent on funding projects with local funds and how you do that is a policy issue from the council on, on going forward, so. Is there anything else, either Cliff or Jim, that?
I think I would just touch on the, the LID is a funding mechanism. The less that an LID funds, the more we have to pick up either in a tough or you have to push the projects back, so I think you kind of have three options there to look at.
So, I've got a question. So, there's a Christian school that's right there, does that help anything right there? Because right by the park, it joins up with the Christian Academy.
Yeah, that's on the end of Second Street and, and I don't know if that was picked up at all in the Safe Routes to School. Because you have, the city did a study of what the priorities are for Safe Routes to School and I know, what was the, what's the next one on the list for?
Tenth.
Tenth Street. Tenth Street is one of those projects that's been identified. I don't think anything was identified, you know, at that location.
Yeah. Second Street is outside of the project for one and for two, the school doesn't have access to Second Street, their access is on Highway ninety-nine.
Yeah, we aren't going down that far with its construction.
Oh, we won't be.
No, because it ends at.
Because there is, there is an entrance from Second Street down that way. There's a gate.
Yeah, that's only fire access, only that's entrance to the park.
And private schools don't qualify for Safe Routes to School.
No.
But just another question about funding, what about tourism? Can we not tap into our tourism funds when you consider that half the reason the road is the way it is is because of tourism?
Well, your tourism funds are a very small amount of money that, first of all, you can't use it for the tourism portion for roads and what's, what's the part that goes to?
Why can't you if the reason the roads are bad is because of tourism?
That's a great argument that.
I would love to have this argument with someone, tell me who.
Back to the Hotel and Restaurant Association because O R L A will fight tooth and nail.
Somebody else with bureaucratic power.
Well, they're, they're a business association. They will, they will fight any changes to this tooth and nail, we've been trying to get these changes, as a tourism community in Newport for years and.
How do they have this power, seriously?
They convince legislators that the business interests of keeping dollars available for marketing tourism in Oregon is more important than infrastructure in the communities where tourism is.
Oh, that's interesting. We are home rule, right? Doesn't that give us the power to do as we please essentially?
We're a creature of the state. It gives us the power to, to do as we please until we are collecting revenues that are set up by, by O R S provisions and then we have to follow O R S provisions, so.
Interesting.
But, but the, the total amount available is not that much. Our funds are tied up with the chamber contract through twenty.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, that was.
Right.
Yeah, and that pays for the Fourth of July and the.
No, I, I'm aware that, that, you know, I'm just thinking outside of the box a little bit because, you know, we're talking about people's homes here and their livelihoods. These people that live across the street from the bakery, they didn't ask for this and here we're giving it to them, right? You know, we have to consider the fact that they are getting driveways out of this, a driveway, a poor driveway, it's ten, twelve grand right there, maybe more, I have no idea. You know, so they are getting something out of this too and we have to keep that in mind. We can't, and, and I'm so concerned about setting a precedent going forward where, you know, down the road, when we do our next big project, people are going to expect us to, to give them favors if we give people favors on Second Street too. So, this is a really difficult situation, I think we find ourselves empty, so I had to ask about tourism, because if, if there's funds we can pull from anywhere else, then I think that's great. I know one of the reasons they pushed the, the transportation utility tax, and it is a tax, I would argue that to death, is that they wanted to be able to do major road projects every few years instead of every six to ten years. We're a small city and I don't see the point in trying to push a major road project every three years and I don't see how asking our two thousand households to pick that cost up is, is even okay. And so, I think when we, we do make a decision on this, we need to think about those, those pieces, the fact that they are getting something out of this, they're getting driveways, right? This isn't.
Well, some, I think elevation matters, right? It's got to.
There's grade changes.
There's grade changes, some of them, it'll be like ten feet.
It's going to improve property values to an extent, things like that, but, but I'm also hyper-aware of the fact that if we agree to pay any of this lid, if we ask our citizens to do this, we're also doing that for the bakery. Everybody gets a discount or nobody gets a discount, right? And so, these are things that we really have to think about when we, when we move forward on this.
The bakery is getting a discount?
No, I'm saying that if we give a discount to anyone, everyone is entitled to one.
Well, yeah, I agree.
And so, yeah, right. And so, my point being is what we do for one, we have to do for all and these are the things that we have to think about when making these decisions.
Right.
I got a few questions, but you go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
I got a bunch.
I will, I, I would argue that it, it is a fee, it's not a tax, because with a fee, we have the power to raise it, lower it, do what we want.
Which is why it was made a fee.
With a tax, with a tax.
I understand the difference.
We're, we're locked in. Anyway, so, but correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, we do have some grant money going to this project, do we not? In your, in your email.
We do.
We do have, on your email, it says twenty-two K for the Bicycle Footpath Fund and two hundred and fifty are coming from the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, so.
The mystery through the state Fed Exchange, you see the state Fed Exchange or Fed Exchange funds on the financials, but yeah.
Yeah, so we do, we do have some, some.
Probably locked in.
Well, these are, these are grants that are state funds, well, of course, the exchange is federal funds that the state exchanges for state funds, so, so we'll see what happens with that. But, but these are funds that are allocated to cities and cities can spend them as they please for, for the right project, so it's not, we didn't get these funds specifically, we didn't apply for, for Second Street, but we get these funds annually, or I think they're annual.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and we can apply them to any street project we choose to.
So, I get, I get, we do have some free money out there that we're.
There is, there is some state money.
To this project.
Correct.
Well, I won't argue free because we all. Well, I won't, I'd argue free because we all paid for it already.
And.
That's true.
And the, uh, and it's unfortunate that we don't fit the criteria for any other funding. And there's not much we can do about that.
Yeah, most of these projects, like I said, an exception would be, uh, the, the street next to the school. That's part of the Safe Routes to School. That's something that would be eligible for funding. You know, that, that application process, you know, you, you really have to start that process a couple, three years in advance of, of a project occurring. Cause it takes a while to get those, those, those projects lined up with the, uh, state funding. But that, that one's a good project to potentially get some assistance. And again, it's not gonna pay for the entire project, but it does lessen the burden on the city. Or the, uh, uh, you know, potentially the property owners on a project like that, when you can do that, so.
Yeah, my home was assessed valued four, five years ago to take care of this stuff. I think the city or the county assessed it four or five years ago. It was assessed higher. And you're saying these assessments on the side right, right now are not gonna be set in stone yet? You haven't set these in stone?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I won't be here on the Wednesday meeting and, like these trees here. I don't want trees in front of my yards. And I've seen trees tear up sidewalks. If you go to Cuyahoga Grove right now, they're tearing it all up now, right now. They got the whole street down, taking out the trees and stuff cause they tore out their sidewalks. And right now we have sidewalks on both sides of our street that I didn't pay for them, but apparently the previous property orders have paid for them there. So you're gonna tear them all out and then redo them when you do this other stuff. You got a, got a assessed at pretty close to a half a million dollars for twenty-one people. I think that's outrageous amount. I know that wages and stuff has went up so high, but it's kinda outrageous for this kinda stuff. Like I said, I don't want these trees in front of the, in front of the place. You guys are gonna talk about a lot more of this kinda stuff going on there, Trent. He just got to saying it's, he's gonna cut the sidewalks down a little bit so that they can save a little bit here and there. I've got, I noticed on the other side of the street from me, your properties go over that direction. Or I think, I don't know how wide your, you know, sixty-foot, forty-foot right of ways you guys own through there. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, Cliff, what's her?
A road within the city is a sixty footer.
I'm not familiar with where you live, but it's either sixty or fifty within the project.
I'm in the greenhouse right there.
We're on the corner.
Right on the corner.
And Second, uh.
On Second and C.
That's sixty foot there.
That's a sixty foot right away through there.
Yeah.
I noticed, I must've been, the previous mayor of this, Alan Holloman, he built that place. Must've been right on the property line because that sidewalk is right on that property line. So I, I don't think he went into your guys' right of way. Hope he didn't, cause you had to take off part of that apartment.
Well, to speak to some of your comments, I agree that for almost half a million dollars is way too much money for twenty-one people. I back you a hundred percent. To speak to the trees a little bit, Crestwell does have regulations on the trees that we pick that should be low rooting systems that should not be popping up sidewalks. Cliff can probably hopefully back me up. I know that's been brought up before and we did discuss that, that we will pick trees that should not be doing that. There's no guarantees obviously, but I believe that was brought up before in the past. So to give you a little bit, your, ease your mind a little bit on some of that stuff. And I think council as a whole agrees that five hundred thousand dollars is way too much for twenty-one people. So.
Yeah.
We, we, we're gonna try and do, do something better for sure.
But like I said, you're gonna try to, this is not set in stone. You'll be a while before you come up with the, the one you're gonna have in there.
Yeah, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
So, so process wise, tonight, this is just a discussion of the council taking a look at, at, uh, you know, giving any final direction to the engineer who has to provide a report to the council at the meeting on March tenth. And so March tenth will be the next time the council is gonna be asked to consider a resolution, um, accepting the engineer's report. And then setting up a public hearing for the property owners, um, to appear. And that will have a actual number that would be potentially assessed to the property owners for that public hearing that the property owners would have an opportunity to comment to the city council. And part of what, what, uh, what, uh, you know, we need to try to do tonight is give some direction to the city engineer, at least tentatively, about what you want in that, uh, you know, in that engineer's report on the, uh, components that would be included in an assessment to the property owners. And so that's, you know, hopefully we can come to some sort of, uh, preliminary conclusion. Council has two more opportunities to change that, but, but we need some numbers so that we can at least have discussions with people. This is what's being proposed. And then council will do a public hearing on it and ultimately make a decision on what, what you wanna do.
Hearing isn't until March, huh?
The public hearing won't be until April.
April.
Yeah.
So we got a, a month is the process, right? About a month? Yeah. Go ahead.
So is there any kind of grants in there for, cause I heard before that, uh, the fire department's gonna get switched around. So they're gonna be using Second Street with fire trucks and ambulances. So is there anything else with that that we can possibly get with, uh, Southland Fire District?
I'm not gonna say there's not, but at the moment, the fire department doesn't even have the funding for that, that building. And they would have to have funding and have to have that building like at least moving forward before there are any grants associated with that.
Well, has it been, uh, discussed about, uh, or is that an intentive about, about that being changed around? And so is there a project for that?
Yeah, and the fire hall, as, as Cliff indicated, that's gonna require a vote of the district. They don't even have that scheduled at any point. And that's gonna have to pass by a majority of people in the district to fund the replacement of that fire hall. And it'll probably be coupled with upgrades to the fire hall in Cottage Grove is what the fire chief has indicated to me.
Okay.
Um, so, so we're, we're pretty theoretical on that at this particular point. But just for your information, um, and then the rest of the council, the city, council has an agreement with the fire hall to swap property, you know, with, with the community center that's currently owned, uh, by the city, uh, for the, uh, um, with the city then obtaining the property where the fire hall is located, with the fire district building a parking lot for the city on the lot behind this building. So that's an agreement that's, that was put into place by the council, uh, I don't know how long ago, but that's.
Four years ago.
Four years ago?
Something like, it was a long time ago.
So I think you might be the only one on council that, uh, that was here when that was done. But that, that's kinda, that's the only agreement that's in place there at this point is a swap of property.
Okay.
So Cliff, I got a question for you. Um, with Tenth Street being our next property, um, how long do you think that street can hold up for our next project? When we talk about, and what I'm getting at is we're talking about three years for the tough fee and, and six years and other things we can do. And I wanna tack the issue we have at hand right now and use all the funds we can right now and set a precedent. But that one's our next one. How much longer do you think that can hold up before we have to do this again?
Yeah, I don't think I'd be comfortable giving you a, a date or a year. I can tell you that, uh, we have a pretty aggressive, uh, asphalt patching, uh, program. And we can make a road continue to be functional for quite some time. What we do is we go in, we cut out the bad areas, we base them back up and re, re-asphalt them. If you go down Tenth Street, you'll see that probably a third of it's been done. That doesn't necessarily bring the road up to standard where it's safe, but it breaks it up to where it's travelable. So we can continue to do that.
Well, I understand that'll be, that's close to the school. So that should be part of the Safe Routes to School. There's also a giant mill there. So like, like the bakery, no offense to the bakery, but the mill's there with a lot of big trucks. And they should be paying a bigger portion of that street repair.
I agree with that.
And putting the sidewalk maybe on the one side where the homes are at, you know, as best we can. But that, I wanna open that option or, or see what that option would be for, cause that would be our next giant project that we would probably have to get into. The next one, um, would be that you mentioned, you know, you, we've seen the cost, but you said there might be other options we can use. Is there more options to add to this lowest cost that we have? Cause I have a hard time even ninety-eight dollars a foot right now.
I, I would say, you know, it's really up to the council to determine what percentage would be borne by the property owners and what percentage would be borne by the city at large. And, and so, you know, you could look at a percentage of the sidewalk, I suppose, as an option. But it's really a policy question from the council.
So what about percentages of cost for the business on that street? I mean, is that something that's been done by the city or, I mean, like Stacy had mentioned where there's tourism coming in. And this is no disrespect, there's no, no ill will here, but you are bringing in a ton more traffic to homeowners who may or may not want it. But you're bringing a ton more traffic down that street, just like LTD, which is no way we're gonna get a cent out of them because I pay them out of my paycheck without being asked as well. But they're coming down that street, beating it up. The bakery is, is bringing in business, good for them, continue to grow. But they're beating up the street. So I don't see why that, a, a better percentage to the person wearing the street down should have to handle that. Versus the homeowners who have one or two cars and drive down there a couple of times a day.
Yeah, and that, that's something, I've, I've never been part of a situation where assessments were different for different property owners on a street. That's something that I could certainly make an inquiry about.
I'd like to look into it cause I think it's the only fair, if the LID is fair, which I do believe it is fair, but there's another caveat. It's gotta be fair to the, the businesses or business or the person, whomever, that is creating the most traffic. Cause homeowners are different than businesses. I have different, I have different taxes for mine where, when it comes into how much traffic I bring in and the trucks I bring in. And I'm all, I'm only allowed to do certain things on my own dang property on asphalting for impervious and, and the big trucks that come in for me. So it's only, you know, I gotta pay those fees. I get that. But it's only fair to evaluate the tourism that comes in for the bakery because they sell so many good products to, that people like. There just needs to be more of an option there. That the homeowners, again, they're forced to have this. I do think it's an upgrade. It's something the city has to do. The city has liability. I'd like to put out there that if we don't produce sidewalks and a safe street, we could easily get sued by somebody getting hurt. And, and so we have to consider that liability. But I still, at the lowest level here, have a hard time swallowing that for a homeowner. So I would like to, us to look into an option of an LID that has some caveat with the business, businesses on that street. And look at the percentage of degradation that they cause and, and how they can, we can mitigate that damage.
Yeah, I think we could look at the tough for some of that, right? Aren't they supposedly charged based on their amount of traffic use?
Trips.
For the roads?
Trips.
You know, trips, you know?
Trips.
They are paying, as I understand it.
We pay twice for the roads that we drive on? And, and then my other question regarding that, when, when we were assess, when we assessed the, the transportation fee, did, um, did they ask for a waiver?
They did not ask.
Okay.
You have the county buses go through there ten, fifteen times a day, the road you're putting in. So the county comes through there ten, fifteen times a day.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Does that turn?
Yeah, I just wanna put forth an observation. So the tough fee is really the only funding mechanism that is funded per trip count. So business has to pay more than residential. If you're looking at an LID that would charge more to a business, if you look at the overall cost of the project, and I have on the very bottom of the sheet, the most assessed to the bakery is twenty-three thousand, the least assessed is nine.
Yeah.
So if you assess them the full cost, they're only making up fourteen thousand dollars on, on the project. It's a drop in the bucket. It really doesn't make a whole bunch of difference.
Can you say that again, Cliff? I couldn't hear you.
So I was just saying, if you assess the LID at full potential to the bakery and gave everybody else the discount, the bakery would be assessed twenty-three thousand. And under the lower amount, they're assessed nine. So they're really only paying fourteen thousand dollars more. It doesn't make a big difference to the project if you assess them, you know, full amount. Just my observation on that funding.
I think, I, I hear what you're saying, but is that even something we could do to hold?
I don't know. That's, that's Spencer did.
Yeah, that's something that, that I'm gonna find out whether there can be any differential in, in, um, in how the LID would be paid by.
That's what I would look at is the full price, but also a percentage of it. Cause that's where the percentage of it really comes into play, not necessarily the cost per linear foot. It's how much traffic, trips, however, you know, they've defined it. I don't know if they've defined it this critically before, since we've brought up the tough fee tax. I wanna say both, cause I agree with both of you, but, but, uh, but I mean, even, you know, and I'm not trying to tack the bakery, but the, the, when it comes down to it, they are creating more traffic. So there should be a percentage of this bill that they should have to pay more of than the homeowners.
Well, but this goes back to the point that I brought up earlier. What we do sets a precedent going forward. And we have to, I don't think that we can assess a higher portion to one NID than we can to the others. This is something I think that we need to probably ask Ross about.
That's what we're, we're asking now because they see us having this conversation if we're all still here with Tenth Street. Because that mill's been here a long time and God bless it, provides jobs. But that's a lot of big trucks, a lot bigger than, than the buses.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely need to find out.
Eighty thousand pounds rolling down there.
Eighty thousand plus.
So if you're rolling down there twenty-five to fifty times a day, that's gonna, I mean, that road is, my aunt and uncle lived down that, down Beet Road my entire life. And I've driven down that road a lot and it's never been a good road. We've never been able to ride our bikes. It's always dangerous as heck coming around that corner.
I think the other thing on Second Street too is, you know, I was asking Cliff, how, how old is that street? And it's really held up pretty well because that street probably, you thought, goes back to the seventies. So that's a fifty years is, I mean, you're getting a good life out of a street.
And how long has the bakery been there? Fifteen, ten, fifteen?
Yeah. But, but, you know, in, in, as far as good quality of streets, uh, you know, when you get to that stage, even a street that doesn't have any traffic on it is going to be starting to fall apart. So, cause that's.
Well, water mitigation's a big one for anything, concrete or asphalt related. So the reason that water's been sitting there.
So, so my thought at this point, and it's thrown out and it's up to you on, on what you wanna have us convey to the engineer. For the purposes of the engineer's report, he needs to use a, a basis for the assessments that are gonna be coming back to the council. And what I would recommend is that for, at this point, you use the, you know, the lowest, cause I, I'm not hearing anyone say anything.
Well, let's just take a quick poll. Do you, does everyone agree? Please speak up. We're only gonna consider the lowest cost here?
Well, no, no, I, I would, I would not be opposed to getting these numbers lower. And if we have to work for the combination of increasing the tough fee, pushing the sec, the Tenth Street project out further, or a combination of, 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 of some of it, because yes, these numbers are still pretty high.
So, so I think, I think what the mayor was asking though, I'm not hearing anyone say the number should be higher. Well, maybe Stacy.
I, I'm not. I'm totally opposed to, um, the lowest one. I'm not putting that on the rest of the city because the city of Crestwell chose to put a business across the street from, from residents. I, I, I don't think it's fair to everybody else to have to pick that cost up. I think a portion of that cost, yeah, but that's a, that's a big portion.
So I agree. But that's what I'm trying to get at is where, where are we at? So Spencer has a direction. So I'd like everybody's opinion.
To give you an idea.
Alonzo, are you finished?
Yeah.
Alonzo, go ahead and to Joe.
Yeah, yes. And well, and I, I, I know that the tough, these tough fees probably to some, a lot of the opinion that I've, I, people I've spoken with, the opinion is none of this is fair. To, to, to charge us anything for any of this is fair. I get that. But the, the tough fee, and, and I know people are gonna be opposed to that as well. But raising the tough fee, in my mind, is a lot more fair and equitable than, than just picking out specific people that are gonna be, um, um, that are going to benefit from the road. But it, the road is for the entire community. So I, like I said, I think that I would like to see some numbers. I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not a numbers guy. But what would it look like if that tough fee wasn't, the tough fee right now is only what, four bucks a month?
He's got it in here.
Yeah, it's in the report.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
For the lowest, for the, yeah. So, so actually, if you look at the report, um.
So. And I think you said earlier, Stacy, that, uh, that when you guys met, that you kept in mind that maybe that, that might be something you guys might go back and.
If, if we get a charge to, absolutely.
Look at. So.
The only thing I would say to this is that if we do something like this, where, where we decide on this project that because, because the homeowners didn't ask for this, never mind that the city didn't ask for this either, and we would be literally paying for upgrades that these homeowners would benefit from when their property values increase, right? Nobody's gonna come fix my sidewalk when it needs fixed. I'm gonna have to. Nobody's going to come fix my sidewalk when it needs fixed, I'm going to have to pay for that, right? And so you have to think about these things too, but what, all I'm going to say is whatever precedent or whatever we do, we need to make sure that going forward, people understand this was a one-off, this wasn't, this isn't setting a precedent for future lids, this is literally for this project only. I'm so concerned that down the road, if we do this this way, this one time, that it's going to backfire on us later.
Well, I think the precedent would be set that if we continue to lid at a lower amount, that the next project would still be, would still be a lid, but it wouldn't, it would still be kind of around the same ballpark. I know materials, of course, are going to go higher, can't stop that, but whatever it is, however you figure it out, the.
They might have more, the next project might have more houses sharing it though, if that makes sense. It kind of depends on how many residences or how many businesses are actually sharing that load.
Well, degradation of the road, this road is so degraded that, I mean, it's not really a road anymore. And that's the other quick issue.
So other than Stacy, I think only one is.
So Joan, what would you like to, what would you like to say? I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I think it needs to be a combination. I've been assessed for sidewalks, and I think that's just a thing, unfortunately.
It is a thing.
It's gotten very expensive. The TUF, where, is that on our utility bill or something? Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, I wouldn't be against paying a little more of that. And leave the lid, you know, as low as reasonably we can get it, but it is a precedent. So whatever we do now, we better be ready to do it again.
Mark?
I'm about the same way with that. I definitely think that the bakery has some responsibility to do with this, and we should be able to maybe look at theirs and maybe raise that up a little bit. Yeah, maybe, maybe a dollar more, I mean, this is only $12 over the year, you know.
If we pick up half the cost, I think it's like, it's a 17% increase on the TUF, as I recall. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, to give you some numbers to go with what you're talking about.
In the packet, tonight's packet, there's kind of three TUF amounts listed in there, depending on what LID.
We'd have to raise the TUF to 650 if we did not do an LID and the city paid for everything.
Correct.
555 if we did a lid and financed sidewalks on one side of the corner lots, which is kind of what we're looking at. But then again, we, with the TUF, real quick, because I want to hear from everybody else, is the TUF, I'm with Stacy, is a tax because we force it on taxpaying citizens, we didn't give them a chance to vote. Now, that was the majority of the council, so I will move on from that. But if we do that, then we're making the entire city pay for a city street, which sounds right under the umbrella, but I don't necessarily go to the bakery a lot, and I almost never use Second Street, so why do I got to pay for that? And it is normal to pay for your sidewalk, it is 100% normal, it's standard issue, it sucks, and do I still want the fee to be lower as possible? Yeah, and I'm going to keep fighting for that, but it sucks. But it is what it is, it is standard operating procedure. I'll get, one second, Bill. Alan, you go ahead.
With me, I'm looking at a bunch of different things too, I mean, I, because I do know that bakery brings in people from off I-5 traffic, seen it, and see a lot of it. Why are these vehicles not paying their fair share of what we're trying to push our residents on that are, like you said, that aren't using it all the time? How can we get to where they're paying that without, and I mean, with the business being there, I understand it's for them, but they shouldn't be 100% liable for all of it because they're not the only business on that street. We might put the fire department on there. We got a senior home up at the far end, we do have an apartment complex down, and a lot of them park on the street. And so that's kind of tearing some of that up. And so it's, and I've, I've heard Stacy talk about before too, it's, I live on the north side of town, city limits, but why should I pay it? Because I don't go over there at all. But, and I do understand that, so I try to take a collective of everybody, everybody that uses it, and everybody that lives in that town should be, should be fairly in response to that. It's like the schools of A Street, that's the school district, I mean, all the little elementary kids' school go there. So now we've got communities where are paying this, then we've got just parents that have kids that's going there, but we've got people that are retired that don't have any kids go there. But you still live in that community, you still need to help with that community. And so just putting this on just one person to pay the big lump of it, I do get it, don't like it, same with overtaxing a business just because they're a business. Sueing a truck driver just because he was there on the scene, he didn't have any part of it, but he's still 100% on that. So I kind of look at it at all those, and I'm trying to figure out how to spread that out to all instead of just a few, especially that uses that. So I don't like using the word taxes, fuel tax. If we put a little bit of fuel on top of the two fuel, gas stations we do have, well then that, we have more people using that, we got a lot of people that come off I-5 just to get gas here. And so they would help be paying that. So I don't know how that is implemented.
That was looked at when we did the TUF fees.
The reason we have the TUF.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that part.
Violently opposed.
Well, they chose the TUF, and they said it right in their documentation, one of the reasons why they chose it was because we would vote no on a gas tax.
Right.
Yeah, so this was their way of getting around the actual gas tax, which is why I call it a tax.
I want to get to Bill real quick, and then we need to get Spencer's direction. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, I don't want to throw a clip on the bus, but I talked to him, I know we talk a lot about the bakery and the traffic, but it strikes me, I've ridden my bike up and down, most of the degradation is south of the bakery, and there's nobody south of the bakery coming up and contributing to the degradation of the road. So blaming the bakery's traffic for the majority of the road that's got to be repaired or sidewalks have to be thrown in is down past the bakery. It seems to me, and if you've been down there and you disagree, I'd like to hear it.
I just walked it, handing out letters to everyone, personal letters for myself on behalf of the council, and I thought South of Second wasn't as bad, it really seems like it's right at the bakery. And I don't want to blame the bakery, but I'm looking at the percentage of it, that they're bringing that much traffic into it.
Are you talking about the intersection?
Yeah, kind of right there.
Yeah, you're right, the intersection around it's pretty bad, but I would think most of the traffic to the bakery is this way, not anything south of it.
Yeah, fair.
Takeout Street needed to be repaired before the bakery even moved in there.
That was my thought, exactly.
Yeah, being a business guy, I don't want to be thrown on the bus like that either, but it is the nature. Cliff?
As you respond to Bill, the block between C and D was overlaid like 12 or 13 years ago, so that's why that section is not as bad. I would say most of the degradation to that road is caused by the buses.
So how should we get Spencer to move forward? How do we want, besides the lowest possible fee?
Yeah, I do have a suggestion.
Okay.
But it's up to you to figure out if it's a good suggestion or not. But what I would suggest for purposes of the meeting that you're going to be holding in two weeks, you may want to, you know, provide instruction to go with the lowest option because it's going to be easier if you want to lower that more, you know, that's going to be easier to do than ever go up from a lower number. And at least then the engineer will be able to get some numbers plugged into the report, and then you can review that and make a decision. And we can, we can do a little more research.
That's what I originally wanted to get at, so I guess that was my fault for not directing that better, is we just need to pick, are we picking the high one, the middle one, or the low one? And I assume, I'd like to everybody to just say what we're picking, and then we can still work on it. So I'm, Alonzo, you go ahead.
Lowest option.
Okay, Joan?
Lowest.
Stacy?
Mid.
Okay. Mark?
Lowest.
Alan?
Lowest.
I'm going to go lowest, and Clark's not here, so we'll want to go, we'll move forward with the lowest possible option, with continual work to see if we can't do something different. And again, and real quick, you know, our property taxes also pay for city streets, so, you know, we all have already pitched in on it, too.
No, they don't.
Not much.
Not really.
Not much, but it's still, it's still property taxes getting paid.
None of it.
Yeah, I don't think.
None of it goes to.
What about the gas tax that we already have, too?
Gas tax, gas tax.
The gas tax.
Which Oregon charges.
And supposedly timber revenue.
Yeah, don't get me started on the timber. We'd have golden streets if they let us log.
That's the truth.
But the gas tax in Oregon is 40 cents a gallon.
Mm-hmm.
That's insane.
And we hardly, we don't see hardly any of it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for letting us attend this, we're not going to be here Wednesday, otherwise we wouldn't have, we would, you know.
Well, hopefully you got my email, and the rest of us, if you've got more questions or something, please reach out, and we'll do the best we can, for sure.
Oh, yeah, we will. But it kind of mainly said what we wanted to know.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you for coming.
We'll wait till you have the big meeting.
All right, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that's how we're going to move forward with lowest one, but we're not going to necessarily accept that.
At least that's the numbers in the engineer's report, and we will spend a little time figuring out other options.
Okay. Is that, is that it for F?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, Stacy? Spencer, is that good for last? Are we doing Second Street? Okay. All right, so that leaves presentations, because we don't have none, so we'll adjourn, and then we'll go to our special meeting. We'll turn this meeting, we'll go to the special meeting after that.
I'm going to keep all this thing working. Am I going to keep all this working?
Spencer, what's his name?
He has a function. Have you ever noticed I don't take notes?
Yuri Long, Yuri Long, thought he was telling me about.
I've never taken notes.
He has all the notes, like him.
Ties to bacon. In the two years I've been here, that's all the notes I've taken.
That's why I got this stuff.
I never take them, I just only take the minimum.
It's a green one, American flag on.
Yeah, I do have a stack about this thing, a paper altogether. Only going to throw it out, and like, if I need to go back to it, it's nice to have, you know? Also, it's all online.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it's really not necessary to keep all that stuff.
Right. You all get your binders? The big old white binders?
You can smack the upside of it, you can take it one.
No, never.
You've got the big hammer, you have to.
I'm actually just totally okay with that, too. Are we going to turn it on right now, or are we going to?
Yeah, we're going to do the special session real quick, shouldn't take you long.
I'm going to bias that resolution.
Yeah, I can tell. Like, sure, okay.
No, you're good.
Neither do I. Right, I know, on top of it already.
Sir? Yes? Give it to Spencer, and then.
Let's do it.
Paul, what? The meeting's fixed. It's a good thing.
It's good to be here.
I think we're going to have a lot of people talking.
You know, I'm going to get the actual, like, I'll have to go to the motion.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, I'm going to have to pass that out. Just leave that open.
I think we lost everybody. We will begin this special session February 24, 2024, and open the meeting. Item one is a public hearing and adoption of Resolution 2025-04, a resolution adopting the position profile as the standards, criteria, and policy directives to be used in hiring a city manager and allowing for public comment. Spencer?
Again, we had a very spirited, lengthy discussion on this. Caitlin has put together the changes that you made in this. I'd love to see if the changes have been captured properly, and while you're doing that, America can initiate the public hearing to take any public comments on the resolution. So at this point, I'd recommend you go to the public hearing, and then we'll have a discussion after that on approval.
Okay, we're required to have a one-minute public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak, please do so. If anybody wants to talk, just come up to the podium and let it fly.
Yeah, right.
Come on, Shelly.
I'm an employer, I have no information.
See it in your eyes.
I'll raise you better.
I look at him, he's good.
I know.
Could be your task in a minute, so.
That's right. We'll take all that we got into consideration, and I will ask for a motion.
There's actually two separate motions on this item?
Is there?
I think. Yeah, one is on the resolution, the second is on the, the, uh.
Alan, go ahead. Alan, your counsel, Deuce.
Apologize.
Back in the daisies here. It means official, man.
I move that the city council adopt Resolution 2025-04, a resolution adoption, adopting and the position profile as standards, criteria, and policy directives to the use of hiring a city manager and allowing a public comment.
Do I have a second? Counselor Holt seconds it. Any further discussions, comments, questions?
I would just, can we, can you go over the changes that were made? I don't recall all of the changes that we just talked about.
One was a.
Half an hour ago.
Local.
Local.
Okay.
Up top, the local on the first two, and then kept on the bottom.
Okay.
There was the housing, it was taken down to housing, expanding housing instead of there being.
All types of.
All types, there we go.
Okay, all right.
And then there was the one that you had mentioned for.
Yeah, the Gizi Karen out, okay.
It's under your support for City Council.
I see it.
The council should be the first to put there, and those were the changes on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any more comments, discussions, corrections? I already got a second, so. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. I will also be executing the second motion for salary.
I make a motion, I further move that the council authorize a salary range of $130,000 to $165,000?
Sixty.
$160,000 for the recruitment of the city manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Moore seconds it. Any questions, comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And that will adjourn. All right.
The time limit is where?
I think they're later.
$160,000. I'm here until midnight.
I'm actually pretty impressed.
I'll stick longer on it.
While we docked off the two.
The two, yeah, 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 that's true. That's true. Worthy.